Let's go ahead and get started. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Van?
Here.
Ms. Wallace is absent. Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Baitman?
Here.
Ms. Sutter?
I am here. Alright, let's go ahead and get started. We have a pretty lengthy agenda this morning into the afternoon. So we'll start with our public hearing preview.
Should be the architecture review board items, yes? Just real quick before we get started, I do want to thank the commissioners for working with staff to allow us to start a little bit earlier in place of the of the field trip. We do have some important work to do with the comp plan in the afternoon, so, but we will, I will warn the commissioners that the public hearing preview will probably take about an hour and fifteen minutes. We drive around it on Tuesday. So, let me know if you need to stop. So, we'll first bring up the architecture review item for Maury High School. So Mel Price with WPA and the rest of the construction team will present.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Mel Price with WPA, 400 Granby Street in downtown Norfolk. Here with our City of Norfolk Project Management Team, our Norfolk Public Schools Project Management Team with MVP, Heartland Construction, the lead, and then our partners at VMDO in Charlottesville. So, here is our team structure. And we're going to walk through the site and then the architecture and all changes made as a result of both ARB and community engagement. So we'll start here. This is the existing site, but just want to make sure everyone is oriented. You can see Historic Maury in the foreground, fronting on Shirley Avenue, and the full Maury campus there highlighted. The proposed site plan changes things around a little bit, so I want to reorient you. You see labeled in number one is Historic Maury High School. I'm going to flip back just for a second. You can see the back half to the north of Maury is the non-historic portion that through this project we're proposing to demolish in order to make room for the new high school. So you see here, number one is just this historic portion of Maury that remains. The new school at the top of the screen labeled number three. And so the new Maury High School will front along 20th Street and then make a turn and come south along Llewellyn. Just across the street, number nine, is the nadatorium. It's a six-lane swimming pool that would be for Norfolk Public Schools to be shared and then for the community rec leagues. Six on center with the new high school is the practice playing fields, multipurpose. Just to the left of that, you see a long skinny bar that's a covered canopy, and that is the main entrance to the school for the students. So the address for Maury will be Washington Park. Number seven is the tennis courts. We have softball, number eight, to the south of the site, surrounded by walking trails and a stormwater park. And then baseball field across the street across Llewellyn. At number 10 is another practice field. That's for the Ghent School to use. And then you see a 200-meter J-track and associated track and field. We have parking labeled throughout, and I have a specific parking plan that we'll focus on. One thing to note is that there are two raised crosswalks. Maury High School students who are headed over to the nadatorium or to the baseball field or track and field will be crossing Llewellyn, and so we wanted to ensure that we have safe crossings that put pedestrians first. So those are raised tabletop that's going to slow cars, but it's not a speed bump. It's a gentle raised crossing with lights activated by pedestrians. And we can come back to that if you have any questions. So here's a bird's eye aerial view looking from the south to the north, so looking towards 21st Street. And then another bird's eye aerial looking from the north back to the south towards downtown, so you can see the full campus there. We have had lots of questions about parking, so we'll come back to this only if you have questions. All this to say that we have worked very carefully to designate clear student parking, faculty parking, visitor parking, bus drop-off, parent drop-off and pickup, and then also set aside parking for the future use of Historic Maury, whatever it may be. We really backed out to make sure there's enough parking for future use. The good thing here is that there are 40 spaces that are above and beyond what Maury High School has now. So there's more parking with this plan even with saving the historic building than there is currently. We'll come back to that if you have any questions. In talking with the community and parents and faculty, you can imagine there's lots of questions about site security. So we have a strategy that both protects students and pedestrians from crossing traffic and also make sure that any balls in the playing fields in this tightly knit urban environment, you know, aren't going into Llewellyn Avenue or surrounding streets. So in some of the cases, you'll see sports fencing and netting, kind of like as you're passing Topgolf. You may have heard from the community, there were a lot of concerns as we started out our site planning with the amenities that are needed for the Ghent School to function. There's three very important pieces. There's a basketball court, upper school playground, lower school playground, and then the mobile classrooms or learning cottages. And we are in the middle of working all of that out with Norfolk Public Schools and with the PTA, and we have an upcoming meeting with them. So what we can say is, all of this will be accommodated. We are waiting to have the meeting with the parents to make sure we put all of those parts and pieces in the location that works for them and for the faculty. These were some early ideas about how all of that could be accommodated, but it's pending that meeting which is scheduled for May 7th. So we'll move to the new Maury High School now. And just the big picture data is that the new school has a capacity of 2,064 students, and it's designed to give a little bit more elbow room, so area per student is 176 square feet per student. Educational specs call for 162, and we've worked very hard to design an efficient building, which means maximum room for students. We'll walk you quickly through these axonometric plans. And here you can see the first floor. What's been important to the community is that there are some shared community uses on the first floor. So if you live in the neighborhood or you're coming to an event, you might be coming to see performing arts, and that's top right in the purple is the theater and the coral rooms. Bottom left is the gymnasium and associated athletic facilities. And then really in the middle in yellow, you can see big dining commons, and that's an area that can also host community meetings, civic league meetings. And so we've designed this first floor to both work for the security need for the students and also to have separate entrances to serve community uses. The second floor, a lot of this just stacks up and becomes double-height spaces. And then we have some offices and additional uses to the far left of the screen. The third and fourth floor are really the classroom spaces, and so we have the school broken down into a series of learning communities. And the theory behind that is that students form better relationships and have better learning outcomes when they can stay in communities as they move throughout the building. And so this floor plan stacks very efficiently to allow for these double-height staircases opening into learning commons. And this is what gives the school flexibility for the future. So we've got a 30-foot structural grid, and we have these open areas where classrooms can flex as needed and change over time as learning styles change. So, architecture. Everything we heard from the community was how much people love the historic building, and so we wanted to make sure the design was inspired by Historic Maury. When we think about this, we think about diagramming or analyzing the building. And so this building has an ABA BA rhythm, and we wanted to help recreate some of those proportions, symmetry and rhythm of the building. We, when I see my text, didn't get stretched out there. That's okay. Changes made to respond to ARB and community comments. We had a really incredibly incredible feedback from ARB, the Ghent Neighborhood League Projects Committee, and then all of the communities we engaged with in that everyone was very well-aligned. So we got the same feedback from everyone, and we made some changes to the design to reflect these things. So this is just a list of the changes that you'll see made as a result of those comments. Proportion of brick to glass, adding a rusticated base, adding a cornice. We worked very hard to add windows and make a pedestrian-friendly corner at Llewellyn in an area where that's difficult, where the theater is located. We've changed the brick. There was a lot of concern of making sure NPS had a pretty maintenance-free building. And made some updates to solar shades, added some signage that the community asked for, and I'll show that to you. And then we added options for bird-friendly glass in critical areas. So we'll go through a couple of renderings. Bird's Eye aerial looking at what the community calls the back of the school, but what the students will call the front of the school. So you see the covered entrance right next to the school buses. That's where the kids will line up and file in the front door. That athletic swing is to the right of the screen, and you can see that three-part architecture with a central white element, the glassier hyphens in between really mimicking the rhythm of Historic Maury. Just another view. There've been lots of questions. This is a, just a practice field, and so that's why you'll see goalposts just at one end of the field. There's not a lot of seating. The football team practices over, or has their games over at ODU. And then ground level view to the front porch or to the porch for the dining commons that you can see centered on the rendering. We have a lot of south-facing glass, which means we need to take care of solar heat gain, and so we have some screening elements where we're incorporating Maury branding and iconography, and you see that with the captain's wheel to the top left. Just another view from ground level, from the student perspective, walking from the athletic swing back into that dining commons area. And then over to the southeast part of the building, this is the south end of the athletics complex, and this is where our six tennis courts are with access to restrooms just off the court. Now, this is a view looking north. If you're riding or driving or scooting along Llewellyn, you're headed north, and you start to see how the school starts to change the character of the street with something right on Llewellyn. Now we're moving up to the corner of Llewellyn and 20th Street, and that white box, white masonry box that pops out is science classrooms. And I'll point out there as well on the corner, there's some signage that's not fully designed, so we'll go back to ARB when we have shop drawings. But it was really important to the community, now that the entrance for the students is in the back, that there was something to mark what this building is for the community. There's a sense of pride around it. And you can see down at street level at that corner. And this is where we've worked really hard. Initial feedback was that the facade was too blank at street level, and so you can see all of the openings that have been punched into the side of that scene shop. We've also worked with that science classroom up above. It's canted now because the initial design you saw was actually encroaching into the right-of-way, even though it was up at the third and fourth story, so now that's been pulled back. And then this is the 20th Street facade, and so we're mimicking that historic porch. This is what the community will likely consider kind of the front door to the building, but it's not an entrance, and so we needed to take that element and design it to be something. So it's an art terrace. These are all of the visual arts classes on this side, and that way it gives some street-level vibrancy to the side of the street. Neighbors were encouraged, because this is not an entrance, 20th Street is a very narrow street, and they were worried about, you know, if any drop-offs were happening there, that would cause congestion, so that is not happening. And so you can see the view here between the new Maury High School and the existing post office. And this is where deliveries and maintenance and things will, vehicles will pull close to the new Maury High School, between the high school and the post office. And just under that projecting science bay is a two-story car out that's for trash recycling generators. All of the things that we don't want to impact the neighbors, we have in that alcove. Doors can be closed. All of that loud, messy stuff can be buttoned up to be a good neighbor for the community. Materials. We have two different colors of brick. We've got a groundface DMU, different types of metal panels. Initially, we had a wood look panel, and in speaking with the Ghent Neighborhood League Project Review Committee, they just asked that things be simplified a little bit, so we've done that. We have sun shading to offset any solar heat gain. And we have those graphic panels that you saw that will be perforated to create some visual interest. And you've seen that in another project of ours at the ERP Ryan Resilience Lab. There's a picture of Pelican and everything on the front of the building. And ARB was very particular about some of the detailing, and so we just wanted to show some images of how we would create this rusticated base by playing with the plane of the brick down at the base level. We'll also have masonry returns all around the windows to really create some of those shadow lines in depth that are so beloved in Historic Maury. Next is the nadatorium, the press box and the dugouts. And so with the nadatorium, again, this is designed to be a shared building, so it's for all of Norfolk Public High School students who have swim teams, and it is also for City of Norfolk rec leagues. And it's designed to serve both. So six lanes, seating for 200, and then restrooms and concessions that serve the field. If this building does not move forward, then we will need to add restrooms that serve those fields over there. And this is a view, just a note, the school on the left has not been updated. This is different rendering software, but I thought it was still important to show you the relationship between the nadatorium and the high schools. You see how the two speak to each other across Llewellyn Avenue. Nadatorium is a really simple one-story building nestled into the greenery, just blending in with the landscape, providing a place to swim. And all of the materials are the same as the high schools so that it clearly presents as a unified campus. So, brick, metal panels and sun shades. Press box and dugouts to serve the fields. And materials are the same. Really most important to this whole process has been community engagement. There are 30 neighborhoods and civic leagues served by Maury High School, and so we've highlighted those on the left. You know, it feels like almost half the city. So with every community meeting outreach has gone out to all of those neighborhoods and civic leagues. There's even been free transportation back to Maury for community meetings to make sure everyone has a chance to give input. The two large community meetings that we've had, we had about 150 and 140 to 150 attendees, so we've had a good turnout. Community engagement has been ongoing, led by Norfolk Public Schools and their consultants since 2018. And then with the PPA team, we began our engagement June 17th of 2024. And so you can see from that time forward, basically if anyone asks us to do a presentation and speak to them and their community about this, this building, we're there. And so we've just had good turnout and lots of enthusiasm to help give us advice and move the project forward. We do have one more big community meeting coming up, and we're designing that now really to engage the students. So we want to have the students help us, especially with classroom design. As we move into the interiors, it should be a lot of fun. And then schedule and next steps. We're moving toward establishing the GMP, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price. And at that point, the project either moves on, continues on. The goal here is to have the school ready to open fall of 2028, and we are on schedule. And if you have any questions about phasing, we do have project phasing just so you can see how, how the project will move forward. So I'll hold here for questions and maybe go back to the site plan. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question about the pathway across Llewellyn.
Yes.
And maybe a refresher on stop sign and lights around there, just making sure of safety.
Absolutely. Let's go back to the site plan. It's always back, but it's the best thing to look at. Almost there. Okay, here we go. Okay, so the two crosswalks are located. So we want to put them where students are going to walk, right? And students are not going to, you know, we want to, they're going to take the easiest path across. So we did work with both transportation and right-of-way. For a mid-block crossing that you see is the second yellow, can you see those yellow arrows? Okay, perfect. And that's going to take students, basically leaving the athletic swing straight from the locker room, straight across to the baseball field. And then the other one is located right at the corner of 19th and Llewellyn to get folks across to the nadatorium. So oftentimes swim practices in the morning. Some students will likely park in the parking that's right along 19th Street, swim, shower there, and then either walk or drive over to school. And so we have a crosswalk right there at that corner. It's a new City of Norfolk standard. We've been working with John Stevenson, and basically when the pedestrian approaches, the light changes and it makes sure that the pedestrian advances first. So we're really excited to get to do that.
So regardless, I know the old location is not part of your project, but imagine something's going to be put there. Is number, is number two the shared parking between the new location and what the old location is going to be at?
It is. Let me, let's go to that parking plan. Okay, so if you see in the parking plan here, we have, number two just kind of labels the parking, but here it calls out the difference. So the north side of that lot, which, and they're separated with a fence and with a security arm, is 45 student spaces. The south side of that tucked against the old Historic Maury has 107 spaces there. And then along debris, there's another lot you can see that has 44 spaces dedicated to the historic building. So we basically took the floor plan of the historic building, backed out of multiple use scenarios, and then designed, set aside the parking that would be needed to give the city flexibility to develop that building in multiple ways moving forward, and then provided the security separation needed for the students.
Yeah, and I know this doesn't impact you all. I just know that's going to be a concern about, I know we're lowering them parking requirements and stuff, but what for the people think about like it's going to be apartment building right there. Like, no one really knows at this point, but is it going to be enough parking there for whatever is going to be converted into? And this is all topics, so we can, we can, I don't want to slow them up.
And that's what we, we basically ran the numbers. If it were to be residential, if it were to be office, and then provided enough for those uses. So we didn't want, we didn't want to end up in a situation where you had a lovely historic building, but no way to park it. So that's why we've, that's why we've laid it out that way. And we still have 40 more parking spaces than Maury High School has now, so.
I think that's it, Ms. Price. Thank you very much. This is a beautiful design and it demonstrates the effort that went into planning, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean we did go to the architecture review board? Do you think there's a recommendation?
Yes, the board voted on Monday to unanimously recommend this to you all for approval as presented.
Thank you. Any questions about the ARB vote? Thank you, Ms. Price. Appreciate you coming down today. I think we can go on to our continued agenda.
Good morning, commissioners.
This segment was continued for the March public hearing. We did want to present to the downtown Norfolk
We did want to present to the Downtown Norfolk Council. I presented last week to them. It was a good presentation and they do support tattoo parlors by right in certain downtown districts. And again, the purpose of this text amendment is to allow three uses by right instead of by CUP and create additional performance standards. First use is tattoo parlor, an establishment which is offered to practice the place in designs, letters, scrolls, figures, symbols, or any other marks upon or under the skin. As you remember, this use was banned until 2006 and allowed by special exception. And since then, we have not had any issues. Current regulations currently allowed by CUP, community commercial, regional commercial, all downtown districts except downtown St. Paul's, light industrial and the 21st Street and Colly Avenue PCOS. Performance standards do require compliance with 43.1 of City Code. And there's also state regulations for the tattoo artists and the place of business. Staff recommendation, allow tattoo parlor by right in all districts where it's currently allowed by CUP. And we've had support from the Gettysburg Association, Riverview Business Association and the Downtown Norfolk Council. Okay. Next use, electric vehicle charging station. As a principal use and open to the public, commercial establishment, design and intended transfer electric energy by conductive or inductive means. Remember, we don't consider this an EV charging station if it's less than four and not open to the public for commercial use. Current regulations, it's allowed by right, business and commerce, park industrial, institutional campus, airport and Monarch Way districts. Allowed by CUP, the community commercial, regional commercial, light industrial and general industrial. And there is one performance standard. EV charging station equipment shall be located not to interfere with vehicle, bicycle or pedestrian access and circulation. Staff recommendation, we kind of want to separate into a principal and accessory use. Accessory use want to allow by right, community commercial, regional commercial, light industrial, general industrial, institutional campus, airport and Monarch Way. We do want to add two performance standards. EV charging stations shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from side and rear property lines and public right of way. And EV charging stations shall be located a minimum distance of 30 feet from the nearest fire hydrant. We do want to create accessory use to be allowed by right, community commercial, regional commercial, light industrial, general industrial, institutional campus, airport and Monarch Way. Three performance standards for this one, we do want to create, limit the number of charging stations at 35% of the required parking spaces of the principal use. If the principal use requires 100 spaces, we want no more than 35 spaces to be allowed for charging stations. Okay. Charging stations shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from the side and rear property lines and public right of way. And EV charging stations shall be located a minimum of 30 feet from the nearest fire hydrant. Last use, artisanal production, the onsite production and sale of hand fabricated objects, manufactured parts or custom craft consumer goods. There's no CUP involved with this use. We just want to expand where it's currently allowed by right. Key performance standards we currently have, not to exceed 15,000 square feet and requires 15% of the gross floor for onsite sales or service. Current regulations, allowed by right in all downtown districts except downtown St. Paul's. And for the staff recommendation, want to allow by right, community commercial, regional commercial, 21st Street and Colly Avenue PCOS, in addition to all downtown districts where it's currently allowed by right. And the Gettysburg Association does support this text amendment. Okay. Yes.
So it's my understanding you're gonna go back and reach out to the city.
Correct. I just found out. Downtown Norfolk Council does have some reservations about the tattoo parlors.
DNC, but DNC.
DNC, I wanna make sure I'm right, DNC what?
L, the civically, not the downtown. Different. Residential. I know you put there except St. Paul's. They would be happy if you put except St. Paul's in on Brambleton between the water, the waterfront and Brambleton.
I will do that. I'll reach out and make sure we can. Anything else?
Can you just give an example, principal use versus accessory use?
For the EV charging station? So principal use, I, there's a parcel of land. I can have EV charging station there if it's more than four and open to the public for commercial use. Okay. Accessory use, I have a gas station. Gas station's the principal use. I want to have EV charging stations at my gas station. I can have more than four and then can't be 35% of the required parking.
So in the first example, it's a parking, the expectation of the parking space?
Yes.
That this is going to be, so would the, trying to relate some examples. So would the, the project over at the Allen Mall be an example of an accessory use?
Yes. The Ikea, the Ikea was the principal use, correct? Correct from all of them?
We were kind of in between the two. They had more. So the Ikea one had more than four, which is what our current interpretation is of accessory. And so we, that's what required the conditional use permit. We don't know what the future will hold for these, so we just wanted to make sure that we weren't prohibiting them. So we're adding it as a principal use. Most of them will probably be applied in accessory use, which, which I think is the more logical way to do it.
Alright, thanks very much, Claire.
If I do this one, I will note the, the two Johnson's Roads ones that were continued are being withdrawn for this month. They should be back on next month as a conditional rezoning. But we're still working out some details with them.
Just to understand, the applicant is missing key information about the parcel of land and question for the rezoning, so there's, we're unable to move forward because of that question about a unknown piece of, there's a little slipper of a parcel, so.
Alright, so for 810 West Ocean View Avenue, the applicant is modifying his previous request. So he withdrew his request for the multi, for the apartment building, but he's continuing with his request for the duplex, because there's, there's two buildings on this property. I believe his plan is still to move forward in the future, but he wants to go back to the civic league and talk to them and, and come up with a little bit better parking plan, hopefully. So he's now requesting the CUP to operate vacation rentals in the duplex on the multifamily property on the north side of West Ocean View Avenue, west of Eighth View in Willoughby. Short-term rentals not conflict with plan offer 2030. It's designated as multifamily. The property is owned RC and RC, all vacation rentals with three or more units on the property need a CUP to operate. So here's the site for the proposed short-term rentals. As I said, there's two structures. There's the 12-unit building in the front and then the duplex in the back. Their new request is just for the duplex structure. Property's been owned by the current owner since November 2021 and property manager is sojourn, which operates other STRs in Norfolk. So here's our current site plan. I'm working on getting an updated site plan. They're still gonna be completing all of the work that's kind of behind for the duplex. And then there'll be, he's still going to complete the landscaping in the front, except for the landscaping that's at the, the top edge of that on this picture. Just because when he does come back in the future for the apartment building, he would need to tear it up to put in the sprinkler lines. So we just didn't want to have him put in a bunch of stuff he's gonna have to tear up again. But everything that's not gonna conflict with that, as far as the landscaping goes, we're still gonna ask that he do. And then he's not going to be doing anything with the parking for the apartment buildings until he comes back again. For neighborhood analysis, within 500 feet approximately 45% of residential parcels, 19% of residential units are single family. All-inclusive, if this application's approved, approximately 3.8% of residential parcels and 9.6% of residential units within 500 feet would be short-term rentals. Any questions? It was 3.8% of parcels and 9.6% of units.
This was continued from last month, I think?
Yes.
Because he ran into some?
He had some dune, he had some dune issues. Apparently one of his subcontractors drove all over the dune and he had to replant it. So he has replanted it. He's waiting on a reinspection from environmental, which I believe is happening today. But he did submit pictures and, at least from my non-professional environmental view, he looks like he's done a good job doing what was asked of him, so I think they'll move forward. Any other questions?
I, I'll do the drop period. Just for the commission's awareness, the city staff, as you know, that we've been working on, Rob really worked, worked on the changes for home occupation regulations stemming from a request from a applicant to allow for massage therapy from the home. We've received an official correspondence from the Health Department stating their opposition due to number of safety concerns as well as, I don't want to say cleanliness, but I think you understand what I'm trying to say here, hygienic kind of concerns with the space. So with that, we have concerns about being able to support it based on that detailed letter. We'll plan to have the letter available to you in your Dropbox for your, for your view and then maybe for future discussion. There's about four, three or four bullet points of concern that they, that they spell out as well as potential conflicts, so. And then with that, we would request direction from the commission on how to proceed. But that doesn't just include massage therapy, it also includes nail and hair service. So with that, that essentially removes the whole request because we currently have an interpretation that deals with those that are doing piano lessons or taking photos. So we, we can try to clean that up later in a quick text cleanup based on our interpretation. But the other ones are the key ones and they, they fully oppose it, so.
So it was nail, hair and what?
Massage therapy.
Those three, did they were opposed?
I have concerns about hygiene as well, more so for the massage, less than the hair and nails. But I'm very interested to see.
We'll have, we'll have the letter that references specific code sections called out, not just in this health code, but also the state code, or the city code that it references. So we also don't know if we need to, if we do want to press forward, I don't know if we need to create other changes in the city code as well, which needs to be vetted. So we'll put that in your Dropbox. Again, we just received that, I believe it was either yesterday or late. Yes, yesterday. So that's why you do not have it in front of you at this moment. We do want to pause and afford the opportunity for us to kind of analyze it and try to understand it a little better.
Thank you.
Hello again. This is a rezoning at the Kindred Blue Greenway. This is in the St. Paul's area. Location is the west side of Tower Drive and the south side of East Brambleton Avenue. Existing conditions are vacant land and proposals to allow a stormwater management facility and a public park approximately 20 acres in area. Proposed use is consistent with plan offer 2030, designates the site as residential mixed and institutional. Request is to rezone from IN institutional and MFNS multifamily neighborhood scale to OSP, open space and preservation. Here's a picture of the conceptual plan. East Freemason Street will be extended and connected to Tidewater Drive. This all started from a grant that was received in 2024, which stipulated this project must remain a site for public educational purposes, hence the reason for the rezoning. Some of you may remember, February 2024, this did come before with the design review from ARB. You all did approve this, the design review portion. The site will include a large event pavilion, extensive pedestrian trail system, five weers for stormwater management and numerous recreational facilities. Here's a picture of the rendering of the large pavilion. Another rendering, this is one of the five weers just south of the East Freemason Street Extension and facing southward. Any questions? Okay.
I think it's still morning, so good morning Commissioners. The next item on your agenda is Love Bug Tattoo for conditional use for 1301 Redgate Avenue. It's on the southwest corner of Oropak Street and Redgate Avenue. It formerly operated as The New Leaf, the florist. And the proposal is to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. This is consistent with plan offer 2030, which designates the site as commercial. Property is owned CC and until the text amendment goes through to City Council, a tattoo parlor requires a conditional use permit. We did talk to the applicant that this tattoo parlor text amendment would be coming through. They said they want to get started and open up sooner, so that's why they're getting the CUP as opposed to just waiting for the text amendment. They're proposing to be open from 7:00 AM till 12:00 o'clock midnight, seven days a week. We did encourage the applicant to extend their hours as late as possible because their original application said by appointment only. And we can't do by appointment only as a condition. So we said do, do the hours you want, but they do intend to be open by appointment only. As you can see, here's a picture of the site. It's fairly small.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
We said by appointment only all day, like from open to close?
So. So they, they wanted to just be like, okay, whatever. I, if I wanted to, I call, make an appointment, whatever time works for me, whatever time works for them. But if they, that time needed, we need to give an hour of operation for them to be able to use the facility as a tattoo parlor.
But no walk-ins, I'm assuming at all?
That's what they said their intention was at the time, but I, I don't know if the, if it'll stay that way. And rather than have them come back also, they can, if it's, we're not gonna restrict them to by appointment only in this, in their conditions. If that's what, sorry. Any other questions? Not really a whole lot to this one. So this one won't expire unless it stops operating as a tattoo parlor for more than two years. And again, it also would be allowed for anyone who comes in after them if they want to. No, not on this.
Still in the morning time?
Good morning Commissioners. This applicant is Fido Play LLC. They're applying for a conditional use permit at 501 East Little Creek Road, Suite 101. The site is located in the southeast corner of Dallas Street and East Little Creek Road. The proposal is to allow the operation of a kennel as an accessory use to a doggy daycare facility. The proposed use is not consistent with plan Norfolk 2030, which designates the site as multifamily. However, the site has been used for commercial purposes for over 25 years and a new commercial structure was just developed on this site. The property is owned CC, which permits a doggy daycare by right. The applicant would like to operate a kennel as an accessory use, which is allowed by obtaining a conditional use permit. This is the proposed site. It previously operated as a car wash that was demolished and recently developed with office slash warehouse spaces. The facility will house pets 24 hours, seven days a week with pickups and drop off hours limited to 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. And they're gonna be operating out of that first bay where you see the 501.
Any questions for this one?
Were there any complaints by the residents behind it?
Question, just curious, are there other occupants in this building yet?
Not yet. It just, I believe it just went through site plan at the end of 2024, so it's very new. The graphics in your front, all the way up there.
So there were, there, there was literature handed out to the people behind them, letting them know that there's gonna be a kennel.
Yes, so there's an apartment complex behind it. I don't know if you can.
Usually is noise all night long.
Well, I don't know. The mailing would go to every owner of a property within 300 feet. And whoever the owner of record is, if it's an apartment building, it might be that the mail went to the company that owns the apartment building. I couldn't say for sure that a tenant saw that.
Yeah, and I didn't have any opposition for our vicinity, so it's kind of in between. Yeah, and I didn't have any opposition for our facility, so it's kind of in between two civic leagues here, and I didn't get any opposition between the two.
So another question.
Yeah, tell me about that.
Yeah. Cause I'm thinking about if it were me living there and I'm working and then I've got a kennel that opens up and I do know that you can hear dogs. Um, and I I just feel like we need to do a little bit more, don't we, I mean.
Let's.
Then we do more.
And so the, it is a conditional use permit and if there is a potential externality like impacted noise or something based on the development of the building, we could condition other things to to mitigate um, the noise. I think that's part of it, that's if there's a concern here, we can, staff can bring it back to the applicant and understand what their plan is for noise attenuation. Um, and then potential how to deal with complaints if there is noise complaints, it is a violation of city code if there's significant nuisance, so.
Right, there's a noise ordinance, and so um, it probably is a violation of the noise ordinance. And and they haven't gone through the analysis that um, Bobby's talking about of what attenuation mechanisms might be available, what they might be able to put in the building. If they want to put something in the building, do differently to manage it, um, you you just wouldn't want them to open the business and then have a noise problem that they can't solve. Really, that's a problem, so um, but i- if it's, if they're barking and it's not a noise violation, um, um, it's the presumption is that it's legal activity, whether it was, some people find barking dogs annoying, but if it's not over the sound um, restrictions in the noise code, I think it's just um, living in an urban area.
Well, I think I would prefer that we set everyone up for success. And you know, I'm looking at these buildings and and you know, we didn't have the tour today, but I think maybe we might want to take it upon ourselves to drive by just to get the uh, perspective on the proximity of, because from what I can see right here, it appears to be close, but maybe not so much. Um, but I think that finding out what the applicant has planned in mind to mitigate any of the noise, um, and maybe attempt to get some input from the tenants of the apartment building, um. That makes sense to me, but I also don't want to unduly burden them with trying to knock on every apartment door, you know.
Should you have any um, site plans, should we, where the outdoor area was, did I miss something?
So the outdoor area is actually enclosed, they don't have an actual uh, ride.
I agree. Present.
This is, this is an accessory use, the primary use is is a daycare, so to have the regular doggy daycare facilities that that you would expect. Um, so it's not just like, you know, a bunch of kennels.
So there's no overnight?
There is overnight.
Yeah.
There is overnight, okay.
But the kennel portion is not primary use of this.
Correct.
And it might, maybe by the time we meet again, maybe um, a discussion of how much, how many are they prepared to, you know, to have overnight? And um, and again, what are the plans to mitigate any noise? We want everyone to be a good neighbor. Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, this one is Dogtopia, the applicant um, is applying for a conditional use permit at one eighteen West Twenty First Street. Um, the site is located on the north side of West Twenty First Street between Omaha Hunter Avenue and Granby Street. The proposal is to allow the operation of a kennel as an accessory use to a doggy daycare facility in the PCO Twenty First Street overlay district. The proposed use is consistent with plan offer twenty thirty, which designates this site as commercial. The property is on PCO Twenty First Street and uh, Community Commercial, which permits a doggy daycare by right. The applicant would like to operate a kennel as an accessory use, which is allowed by obtaining a conditional use permit, which is contingent upon uh, city council adopting our zoning text amendment modi- modification um, in April. This is the proposed site, it was previously operated as retail spaces, uh, which used to be Tuesday morning, um, and is currently developed with other retail spaces. Um, this facility will house pets twenty-four hours, seven days a week with staff on site, five AM to ten PM. Uh, with operating hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and nine AM to five PM Saturday and Sunday. Um, the applicant did state that staff will not be present on site between ten PM and five AM, but the pets will be monitored with cameras and temperature uh, controls.
What's, do you know what's next door? Well, um, I know they're attached, but what's, who's their neighbor?
I think it's, see? On this side, I believe it's a furniture store, the other side, I believe it's uh, vacant.
No, I believe there's a nearby.
No. Now moving to uh, our A C, Gang Gravago, um, the applicant.
This one across the street?
No, there's a restaurant across the street.
But then, well, not directly, but on the on the corner, there's an apartment building right there.
Can you go back to the area?
On the first. Yeah, so not directly across, but down into the left, it's commercial downstairs and it's all apartments. Um, above. Yeah, the old series.
Yes, uh, two oh one was twenty, if you look on the.
Two oh one was twenty.
It's, it's in the southwest, to the west of the site.
It's the cor- the corner of uh, twentieth and, you can never pronounce that word.
Hundred?
Yeah, there you go, amazing. That corner, that uh, to the left of that corner, I believe that's a mixed-use building.
Yes.
Commercial, bottom, apartments above.
So they, uh, the GBA, they talked about this quite a bit, they already have uh, three vets' offices that have kennels as an accessory use. So they're pretty familiar with the accessory kennel usage, and they're aware of that, and remember the amendment was based on this applicant that they wanted to amend their district so this applicant could go into that district.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
This applicant is Gang Gravago, they're applying for a conditional use permit at two thirty West Only Road. The site is located on the north side of West Only Road. The proposal is to allow the existing convenience store with the sale of alcohol and smoking products to operate under new ownership. Um, the proposed use is not consist, uh, the proposal is consistent with plan offer twenty thirty, which designates this site as downtown. The site is Don, Zon Dad, which is Downtown Arts and Design and Coastal Resilience Overlay. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit to operate as a convenience store with the sale of alcohol beverages for off-premise and the sale of smoking and vaping products um, due to the change of ownership. This is the proposed, this is the site, it's currently operating as a convenience store with these accessory uses. Um, the hours of operation for the establishment, um, the applicant stated at six AM until eleven PM, seven days a week. Um, they are proposing to sell off-premise, um, so there should be no minimum packages of six or less. Um, and wine should be sold in containers of three hundred and seventy-five milliliters each. Um, they did state that they are not proposing to sell any vaping products and uh, there would no, there would be no other requirements on this site. Um, I did speak with them in regards, after visiting the site, there was a um, trash receptacle missing out of that enclosed area. They did say that they are going to get a replacement and they're going to send me um, information with the replacement. Any questions for this one?
You see, so I see chairs out there in the front, a table and chairs it looks like, are they gonna have?
No, they don't have outdoor dining.
What was the community um, response to this?
Um, as of right now, I believe they are okay with it, the applicant did uh, recently go to the civic league um, as a precaution, just to make sure that he would be able to operate, um, but I haven't had any uh, opposition to it.
And there's not been any violations or problems with it previous?
No.
Do you happen to know if the owner has experience operating?
Um, I do not know.
That's fine, it's a new, it's a new switch and, right?
New ownership, yes.
Thank you, chef.
Mm-hmm.
All right, this is a condition use permit for Amalee Tre Focaccia Ria, address is four forty Monticello Avenue. Located in the southeast corner of East Charlotte Street and Monticello Avenue. Existing conditions are commercial and propose to allow existing restaurants to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. Proposed use is consistent plan offer twenty thirty, designates the site as downtown. Current zoning is DMU Downtown Mixed Use, uh, the Downtown Mixed Use District, CUP is required to sell alcohol for on-premise consumption after five PM. Here's a picture of the floor plan. Um, applicants previously operated and sold in market, they opened in two thousand twenty-three, they're going to move to this location. Uh, they also owned a food truck and an Italian restaurant in Virginia Beach as well, they previously owned one. And they have been open uh, without alcohol since mid-March in their, in this current location. Uh, hours of operation and the sale of alcoholic beverages on premise, uh, eight AM to nine thirty PM, seven days a week. Occupancy occupancy load, twenty seats indoors, zero seats outdoors, twenty-two total capacity. And we have received support from the Downtown Norfolk Civic League on this.
What was they reporting?
Uh, innate chiropractic.
Did they have alcohol previously in their other locations?
I can check on that, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'll check on that later.
I don't.
They did not in Salton?
Yeah.
Not in Salton, but I'm I'm unsure of their location in Virginia Beach, I would assume.
Based on me, I would really assume that they did, I'll check on the, it's on our location.
But it sounds like, I don't want to assume, but if they did have, uh, if they have had experience, that there are no violations.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
This applicant is Vango Bistro, they're applying for a CUP at nine fifteen West Twenty First Street, suite A. The site is located on the south side of West Twenty First Street. Proposal is to allow a new owner to operate a restaurant with extended hours, the sale of alcohol beverages for on and off-premise consumption and outdoor dining beyond nine PM. The proposed use is consistent with plan offer twenty thirty, which designates this site as commercial. The zoning is PCO Twenty First Street Overlay District, um, and Community Commercial. The site operated as Streets from two thousand and thirteen until March of twenty twenty-five. In two thousand and seventeen, Streets modified their use to allow outdoor dining. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, Streets also obtained a conditional use permit, um, with, for a restaurant with extended hours, sale of alcohol beverages off and on uh, premise consumption and outdoor dining beyond nine PM. A new owner is proposing to operate the establishment in the same manner as the previous operator, which requires a new conditional use permit. This is the proposed floor plan, the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for any outdoor dining on private property located less than a hundred and fifty feet from single-family homes to operate beyond nine PM. The outdoor dining is located against, the building is um, private property and similar to the last establishment, the applicant is requesting it to remain open until twelve midnight. Um, the city code does limit closing hours for outdoor dining in the right-of-way to eleven PM, therefore the dining in the right-of-way will close by eleven PM. So hours of operation, uh, Streets operated from four PM to two AM Monday through Friday, eleven AM to two AM Saturday and Sunday. Uh, Streets also had alcohol beverages from four PM to eleven thirty, I'm sorry, one thirty AM Monday through Friday. And then eleven AM until one thirty Saturday and Sunday. Uh, Vango Bistro is proposing hours of operation eleven AM until two AM Monday through Friday, and then nine AM until two AM Saturday and Sunday with alcohol beverages, um, beginning at eleven AM until one thirty AM, and then Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, uh, nine AM until one thirty Saturday and Sunday. Um, outdoor dining hours, um, are similar to the hours of operation, however, um, they will be closing outdoor dining at uh, midnight, opening at eleven AM on private property and then in the right-of-way, they're opening at um, eleven AM until eleven PM Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, nine AM until eleven PM, Saturday and Sunday. And then the capacity is the same, they're still proposing, um, the forty-one seats indoors, uh, four seats in private property, twenty-four in the right-of-way with a total capacity of seventy-seven. And I'm going to do a better job at getting the picture so that you guys can see kind of the right-of-way opposed to the uh, private property.
Yes, that was going to be my question, where is private property?
Between the sidewalk and the.
Oh, where the door is in the little.
Right there, that's it.
So there's only two seats.
Yeah, very limited, four, yeah.
Oh, got it, thank you very much. I like that better.
On that previous one, Heather, the previous operator, were there any uh, complaints or calls for service, you know?
Um, so there were some calls for service, but nothing as far as their control, I know they were burglarized a couple of times. Um, but other than that, no complaints.
No noise or anything?
Correct.
All right, this one's been on your agenda before, um, I don't know how far it actually, if it actually got to the presentation point, but uh, this is Platine Please Seafood uh, and Bistro. Uh, condition use permit seventy-one oh five Sewell's Point Road. Uh, it's on the northwest corner of Sewell's Point Road and Johnson's Road, the intersection there. Um, it's right next to the uh, the teeny or the tiny giant there. Um, it's operating as a, as a restaurant right now, um, but with a limited service right now, they're operating as a takeout-only establishment. And they're proposing to allow the existing restaurant to be full-service alcohol. Uh, the use is inconsistent technically with plan offer twenty thirty, which designates the site as multifamily. Uh, but the site was developed in nineteen seventy-two and has been consistently occupied by restaurants and other retail uses. Property is on CN, Neighborhood Commercial, um, in this district and area of the city, you need a conditional use permit to operate as a restaurant selling alcohol after five PM. Uh, here's a picture of the site, they opened in tw- I think it was twenty twenty as a takeout-only restaurant, or twenty twenty-one as a takeout-only restaurant during the pandemic. So you can see they have, there's, there's two doors there. Um, they were only supposed to operate in the first one, but at some point during twenty twenty-one, they they expanded it into that left bay as well. But they did so without building permits for it. Um, so we issued them a violation in twenty twenty-one. Um, we closed out that violation in twenty twenty-four and reopened it a new one, uh, to try to clean up some of the uh, administrative parts of the violation there. They, they are now operating as a takeout-only restaurant, but they did try to operate uh, not with alcohol, but as a full-service restaurant on that left side there. Um, they're still working through the Virginia Department of Health, um, building code, certificate of occupancy, zoning, all that stuff. That is the history on this one, I just wanted to make sure I kind of expressed that now. So you can see the difference here though, um, that right side of the bay, there's right that dividing line down the middle. They really were just the transactional area, the kitchen and a little takeout establishment, and they tried to open up on the other side, which wasn't uh, coded for restaurant occupancy. Um, so this is floor plan done by an architect, um, sealed, they're working through it all, but they're, and they're going to have a very small capacity regardless. Uh, they're proposing to be open from ten to eleven, seven days a week, sell alcohol from noon to eleven, seven days a week. Uh, they're only going to have thirty-four seats indoors and a total capacity of thirty-six people. The floor plan?
Currently, they are operating as a takeout only.
Yes, only that right side.
Only, this is what it will be in the future, but currently.
Yes. It's just the right side, that whole area where you see that the tables and chairs and stuff, the whole is not being used.
It's just the right side, that whole area where you see that the tables and chairs and stuff, the whole is not being used.
Okay. And adding the alcohol just for the takeout, no?
Okay.
No.
So, they, they've actually already built out the stuff on the left?
Yeah.
And so that exists, but they're not utilizing it right now, it'll allow them to, to sell alcohol in that space as a restaurant.
They're going from takeout to full-service restaurant.
Okay, and this is all happening at the same time, and it did.
It, it happened and they shouldn't have, so now they're coming in to fix it.
Okay.
Yes.
And this application is for the whole kit.
Is for the whole thing.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, okay. So they didn't prob- they didn't realize, I guess, that they needed to do a, okay.
We'll say they got a, a level ahead of themselves, we'll say that.
They're trying to do it correct now though, is what I'm hearing.
And any complaints from the community, it felt like there's an apartment complex, no more?
Yeah, um. There, there are some concerns about the location, um from. We can't, we can't find anything in writing unfortunately, we do remember, even, at least a discussion that the civic league was concerned about the situation, um and the, we highly, strongly encouraged the applicant to reach out to their council members and talk to them about this application.
Okay. Any other?
The um, the big part of concern is not particularly their restaurant, but the actual Tiny Giant itself, a lot of the crowds that hang out around there, are they working with Tiny Giant or how to kind of clean up all that, or is it just out of their hands at that point?
We've, so city staff's been called out to the location, uh the business compliance unit's been out there as well as fire and police, um. Tried to work with the, all the tenants in the shopping center, because I believe the, the complaint that we received is the entire shopping center is of concern with most, as you noted, Mr. Pendleton, mostly congregating happening at the Teeny Giant, so. Um we've tried to reach out, we're un- we haven't heard any update on, on, again, the weather hasn't been good, so we haven't seen as much of, of, of those things happening, so. Uh but this is on our radar to continue to watch.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Any other questions, okay. Next one is Mr. Bizarre LLC, uh condition use permit fifteen thirty-three East Bayview Boulevard, this on the southeast corner of Bayview Boulevard and Portal Road. Um it's currently operating as Mr. Bizarre, um it's a retail goods establishment. And they're proposing to expand to allow the sale of smoking or vaping products as an accessory to their retail store. Uh this is consistent with plan offer twenty thirty, which designates the site as commercial. Uh the property is on C N Neighborhood Commercial. Um in this district and everywhere else in the city, you need a conditional use permit to have an accessory use of sale of smoking or vaping products. Uh so one of the things that the civic league noted and that staff noted in, as well, um is the proximity of the school. Um so that's one of the reasons you see the limited hours of operation from noon to eight, not uh, you know, open until ten or open until, like, starting at seven A M, eight A M. Um they have a very eclectic mix of products. Um if you get the chance to go inside, um you'll understand what I mean. They do, they have, they have, they have several different products, they have some incense, um some, I, I'm not, sorry, I'm gonna focus on what they consider to be smoking and vaping products. Um you know, wraps, things like that is what they, they're looking to sell. I don't believe they're looking to directly sell cigarettes or things like that, but we considered that, any of the products that they were, that they were talking about selling um to be smoking or vaping products, even if they're not specifically tobacco or uh, or anything like that. So that's why they're coming in to get that, the ability to sell those, those other products that they have. Again, I strongly encourage you to go check out their store to see, um if, if you have any questions about the products they sell or things like that. It's, it's a very, very wide range of stuff.
We should view oddity and hetch on this.
Yes.
Um any concerns about the uh visibility in the windows?
That's a, that's, that's a conversation Jeremy and I've had over the last two weeks about uh visibility and transparency versus fenestration. Um we will review it, um there's a note, I have a note here to, to review if we need to uh, uh apply a signage condition on this or require something more for the windows. Um technically, and I'll say this out loud as we were reviewing the ordinance, uh for areas other than downtown of the P C O, there isn't a transparency requirement. It is a fenestration requirement, which is different, so there's not a requirement to see-through, there's a requirement to have windows and doors, uh not necessarily see-through windows and doors, so. Um again, that's, it's a nuanced discussion that'll bleed over later, but we, I am looking, I have written here about potentially putting a signage condition um to assure that none of the signage goes over a, a specific allotment.
Okay.
I'll also add that the applicant, this is a choice done by them to try to create like an atmosphere inside the store. Um and so, just adding that as well.
And so you did say that the civic league was for.
So, they, they were, they had some concerns about the proximity of the school, uh but they did reflect that in the hours. Uh but they also noted the fact that there's two other, two or three other stores, um that sell tobacco products or smoking vaping products within a half-mile radius of the school. Uh we don't, I don't remember exactly where those establishments are, but we think they're grandfathered from the C U P requirement.
This is uh kind of torn on this specific comment, that this strip area, it's right next to a Dollar General, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a section of, of brass area that I guess is between the sidewalk and the street that the city actually. The owner of this property decided he didn't wanna cut the grass, so they basically killed all the grass. And uh it, it just with the facade and that, it looks, you know, not really good for that community. I hate to put, you know, restriction on them to plant any, any uh plants, and we've said we didn't want to do that, but this is one of those scenarios where it's just like I wish we could do something with the owner of that property to do a little effort into making it look, you know, welcoming, so. You know, you look at the, the street views, you know, I mean it's, you can see the, they've just put down tarp for the purpose of not having any foliage around there. So, just throwing it out there, I don't know if that's.
The property owner is listed on the application, um if you'd like, I can try to reach out to them and see what we can, if they're willing to do anything, or the applicant, or give them your information if. Yeah, how?
We'll take a look at it, Mr. Raymond, and if, determine if we need to bring forward a condition.
Alright.
So it's lunchtime, so we're gonna go through a series of six McDonald's. Um and it, it, uh Kim had asked me if I could kind of run through um drive-throughs and drive-throughs one oh one, so. Um I wanted to start with, um we have a, two, two definitions, kind of, we've got a large-scale drive-through, uh and then we've got small scale, so. Large's drive-through, um the definition for both is essentially the same. Uh designed for a consumer while remaining in his or her motor vehicle to purchase goods, products or merchandise, or receive services. Um such facilities typically have at least one order box where the consumer can remotely communicate with employees and at least one pickup window where merchandise is exchanged for compensation. And then we give some examples. Um essentially, the rule of thumb is a large scale is if you've got two drive-throughs or you're a restaurant, we're gonna consider you large scale. A small scale is gonna be more one drive-through, you're a bank, just general rule of thumb. So for the performance standards for large-scale um drive-throughs, the canopy has to be consistent with the principal structure. The pickup windows and order boxes shall not be located on the front facade of the building they serve. Pickup windows and order boxes shall be located at least fifty feet from a residential district or a lot containing residential use. The facility shall comply with the stacking spaces requirements, and we've got a whole chart showing, uh depending on what use you are, how many stacking spaces you have to have. Um vehicular ac- access to drive-through windows or service area shall be provided upon approval from the Department of Public Works from an arterial or collector street or on a local street within one hundred and fifty feet of its intersection with an arterial or collector street. Um I will let you know that the six McDonald's we're gonna look at, Transportation did look at them, they had comments on one and I'll go over that when I get to it. Um keep going with the uh large scale, uh internal traffic circulation patterns on the lot shall prevent vehicles from impeding street traffic or blocking access to any required parking spaces located on the lot. Drive-through facilities shall be designed so as to minimize obstructions to the movement of pedestrians along sidewalks through areas intended for public use or between building entrance and customer parking spaces. For the portion of the drive-through lane adjacent to and between an order box and a pickup window, a landscape planting area at least three feet in width or a masonry wall at least thirty finches, thirty inches in height, and utilizing exterior finishing materials compatible with the principal use shall be provided. And then for any portion of the drive-through lane that is located between the principal building and the street, uh a landscape planting area at least three feet in width shall be provided along the perimeter, canopy trees, um shrubs and a minimum of sixty percent of all shrubs shall be evergreens. And then noise emitted from pickup windows and order boxes shall not exceed noise levels in the, in accordance with chapter twenty-six of the city code. So those are all of our performance standards for the more intense drive-throughs, so the large-scale drive-throughs. We find that these types of uses, as you can see from all the performance standards, are pretty intense, and that's why we want the conditional use permits on these more intense um large-scale drive-throughs. We actually allow the, the one drive-through for a bank by right in our commercial districts, so the focus really is these um large-scale drive-throughs. So I hope that covers that. Um so just an overview of the, the McDonald's we're gonna be looking at, they all currently exist, they all currently have one uh drive-through and pickup window. There is one that has two order windows, but it only has one uh lane that leads to the two order windows, so they're increasing it to, they're, they're adding a second lane. Um some have conditional use permits which tie them to the one drive-through, some are legally not conforming, they're grandfathered for the drive-through, but now that they're adding another drive-through, we get to bring them into compliance with the C U P. Um they are all um either adding landscaping or modifying, enhancing landscaping. Uh some of them are relocating their handicap spaces, uh and as I mentioned, they're all adding a second drive-through lane. Alright, so on to the first one, um two eleven East Little Creek Road. Um so this is the one in Ward's Corner, it's next to what used to be the Virginia Hamm, right near where the new Target is gonna be. Um so this one is proposing to, again, add the second drive-through and the drive-through is gonna be twenty-four hours, it's how they operate now. We require a conditional use permit for that, so they're coming in for both. Uh it is consistent with Plan Norfolk, which designates the site as commercial. Um this one is Zone C R, um this one actually has a ti- has a C U P that is tied to a site plan. Uh but again, because they are changing things, um they do need a new conditional use permit, and this is the one that has, actually has two order boards now, but it only has one stacking lane. So they're modifying the site by adding that second stacking lane. So I tried to on each of these give you um an area of what it looks like now, and then the site plan as it's proposed. So this one, they are removing parking on the west side of the building, cause that's where the drive-throughs are gonna come. They are moving the handicap parking spaces to the north side of the site. Um they are um adding enhanced landscaping, and this is the one that Transportation looked at. Because it's at Ward's Corner, it's a very busy area right here, this property actually has an easement to use the um entrance and exit kind of that will be going to the Target where there's a light. So what Transportation um would like, and I've shared this with the applicant and I think they're okay with it, is that the two um entrances, exits on Little Creek are gonna be right in, right out, and then if you wanna make a left, you've gotta drive down and go to the light on Little Creek, and you can make a left there. So I think they've agreed to that, so we, um it has to go, um so we, hopefully we'll get a revised site plan showing that. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, uh the next one is at ten forty-six Camp Estella Road, northeast corner of East Indian River and Camp Estella. Uh again, this one is not gonna be twenty-four hours, they're just adding a second drive-through, uh consistent with Plan Norfolk, which designates the site as commercial. Uh this one is Zone C C, again, this one has a C U P, it ties it to one lane, so they have to modify the C U P to allow the double drive-through. Um again, also on this one, they are relocating the parking against the building, relocating the handicap parking to the uh west along Camp Estella, uh and they are enhancing the landscaping. Um and we also um shared the handicapped information, the relocation and the location with Transportation. Uh and they, they indicated that it did meet the requirements of the location for handicap parking spaces. The next one is uh forty-one oh eight Hampton Boulevard, so this is the one right near O D U, uh northeast corner of Forty-first and Hampton. Uh this one is another one that is already twenty-four hours, so it's twenty-four hours and they're adding the second drive-through. Uh consistent with Plan Norfolk, which designates the site as commercial, uh Zone C C. This, uh this one actually predated the requirement for C U P, so now we get to bring them into compliance by getting the C U P for their drive-throughs. Uh so they'll get the C U P for the drive-through as well as the one for uh operating twenty-four hours. Um this site here, it's a pretty tight site, uh but they are able to add the second uh drive-through lane and they are gonna add some landscaping as well. Okay, and forty-one twenty-five, this is the one in Riverview on the west side of uh Granby Street. Um no twenty-four hours here, just adding the second drive-through, uh in compliance with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates the site as commercial. Uh as I mentioned, it's in Riverview, um and this one also predated the need for a C U P, so they are coming to, into compliance uh by getting a C U P for the drive-through. And um this one is nice, they're adding a whole bunch of landscaping along the northern property line where there isn't any, they're getting rid of some of their parking, they had a whole lot of parking, that was over what they needed, and they're adding the second drive-through. Um and then the next one is eighty-three hundred Hampton Boulevard, this is way up uh in, near Glenwood. Uh again, it's an existing, uh just not the twenty-four hours, adding a second drive-through. Consistent with Plan Norfolk, which designates the site as commercial. Um also predates the requirement for the C U P, bringing them into compliance by applying for the C U P. Um this one, um adding the second drive-through lane, um not really moving a handicap or anything like that, but they are also adding and enhancing some of the landscaping on the site. And then I think the last one, eighty-four oh two Tywater Drive, this is right across from uh Northside Park. Um not twenty-four hours, adding a second drive-through lane, consistent with Plan Norfolk, uh which designates the site as um commercial. Um also predates the requirement for C U P, so again, bringing them into compliance. And then on this one, um they are um relocating the uh handicap parking spaces to uh, uh long, let's see. Uh so to the north side of the site, um and they are enhancing uh the landscaping.
Not this particular one, and you don't have to go back, but the other two, it just had the little island there where they had the, the, you know, the two lanes. Didn't seem like it was really solving a problem of, cause I, it looks like you're trying to solve a problem of having backed up cars going in, correct? That, and this solves it somewhat, but the others, it looked like maybe only one or two cars. So they're adding two, they're, so they're adding a, a order window.
Well, they're adding two, they're, so they're adding a, a order window, so they'll have, they'll be able to have six, a total of six stacking spaces So they'll have, they'll be able to have six, a total of six stacking spaces that aren't kind of across the parking lot, but that are a little more um close together, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I understand it here, but there were just a couple that, that island was tiny, like the one previously is. I mean, I guess they did the direct repair, that doesn't look like.
Now that one.
And I understand it's only like two or three, like extra cars.
Yeah.
But, okay, so.
And that one, they're not even really doing a second stacking lane, yeah, yeah.
Not when they're not even really doing a second stacking lane, yeah. And the, the previous one from that was the same way, so I'm not.
But they're adding another order board, so I, I think that's what they're going for. But they're adding another order board, so I, I think that's what they're going for. So, yeah, hopefully it'll, that, and, and apparently, and I, I don't go through drive-throughs, but um.
So, yeah, hopefully it'll, that, okay. That one looks like it would be confusing.
Apparently you can order and then I guess you can go park and they will bring it to you?
And then I guess you can go park and they will bring it to you? Yeah, and I know that.
So that, so they're taking.
So that so they're taking orders quick.
So that so they're taking orders quick more quickly with two order boxes. And then you can either guess wait line or go and sit and wait for your food to come.
What what else say also, if you take a look closely at some of these plans, especially if you take a look at this one. They're allowing for bypass lane. What as we know, what ends up happening, a lot of times is when they stack and people wanna get out, they can't escape. And so you can see on the right part of on the proposed plan, they're removing about five parking spaces to allow people to exit. Just in case they get stuck or or if they want to not go, they turn in and they realize, I I can't wait for this, I need to get out. So most of, I think all of them, uh whenever you them all have this additional kind of bail lane on the at the beginning of the of it. Which right now, it's con- it's conflicting with the parking spaces. So they just sit and they can't and there's people trying to back up and so.
We think they're solving a problem.
They think they're solving a problem, how about that?
Well, it's worth your architects, but look, the next one, Tywater Drive one, I think. Make sure you can see the drive aisle that goes next to the existing drive-through and then there's the parking. If they put that second island in there, the diagram doesn't look proportional to what the picture does, so I'm not sure.
Well, because they're removing all of the stuff up against the building.
Oh, they're moving her up against the building.
Yeah.
They're taking away all the parking spaces against the building.
So that one doesn't have, so they're removing the handicap space, that's when they're moving the handicap space up there.
That one doesn't have.
Okay, okay, I didn't.
So they're not losing them.
That will give room for it, yeah. Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah.
What they're what they're finding is, and and I don't know if anybody's been caught in it, you park on the one that leads right up to the building and then you'll never get out.
You could get out that one.
Because you're stuck behind all the people that are that are queued, yeah. So they're just like, well, let's just remove those spaces for my issue.
And they they were overparked anyway, so all of them are reducing the parking, which is a good thing.
And they they were overparked anyway, so all of them are reducing the parking, which is a good thing. Right.
Adding landscaping, reducing parking.
And landscaping, reducing parking. Right.
And not blocking the lanes going in.
Right.
Um. Quick question as far as the drive-throughs, um is there anything keeping us from adding them to the consent agenda?
No.
And as soon as you add sticky ass, I thought it.
Those are really well shown.
Thank you, Andrew.
Oh, and so I will also tell you that, uh they did go to every civic league. Um they got support from every civic league. The one in Ward's Corner, um conditional support, what they wanted was the look at the exits, which is exactly what we're doing. Um they also wanted, and I sent this to the applicant. They wanted a lot of signage on the site as far as um where the crosswalk was for the handicap to the door. And then also they wanted signage about the, you know, you can't turn left here. Well, the way it's gonna be configured, you're not gonna be able to take a left, so but other than that, I think they were okay.
I'm leaning toward consent agenda unless we hear otherwise, oh well, okay.
No, I I've seen a lot of people make laps out of right and turn out the things. Oh, exactly.
We can event around that.
Exceeds um the department of transportation.
Yeah, like, so you do it with stripes, cause the uh our Transportation had sent them, this is what we want you to do, and it's curbing. And she's like, you just do stripes, I'm like, no, you're gonna do curbing, so I have to drive over a curb if they're gonna do it.
Um I'm just sorry, Andrew. Um uh lunch is here, if we wanna pause till or do we wanna just keep going?
Do we wanna take a break?
Yes.
Sounds like yes, take a break to eat.
And then we can reconvene and.
Well, you know, this is a um this is also a drive-through, can we just do this one and then drive-through? Let's finish out the drive-throughs.
Alright, conditional use permit for Seven Brew Coffee Company. Uh address is seventy-four eighty-three Tywater Drive and seventy-four eighty-six Wellington Road. Uh southwest corner of Tywater Drive and Stanley Street. Existing conditions are commercial and propose to allow a retail goods establishment to operate a drive-through facility large scale. Proposed use is consistent with Plan Norfolk twenty-thirty, designates it as commercial. Zoning is CC, uh drive-through facility large scale is required to have a conditional use permit as an accessory use in the CC district. Here's a picture of the existing site, uh this will be demoed for the new coffee shop that will be uh constructed. Uh we've been some back and forth with the conceptual plan, this is kinda what we landed on, pretty pleased with it. Uh circulation will be entering on Stanley Street, that'll be the one-way or the two-way entrance. They'll queue up into one or two drive-through lanes, uh order their coffee, have the option of taking two lefts and exiting on Stanley. Or exiting on Tywater Drive, which will be a right turn only exit. Okay, kind of their business model, there's no order boards, no uh voice transmitters. They're gonna come to the window, take your order and then deliver your coffee that way. Uh there won't be any walk-up windows either for ordering, but they said if somebody does walk up, they will uh take their service. Um there won't be any indoor seating or order as well, so. I'm trying to think of anything I'm missing that.
Really, yes.
Pretty much. Um Seven Brew, it's the national coffee chain with over a hundred locations, there is one location Newport News. Um we will add a condition for no voice boxes, there is residential in the SF six area, um that's the reason for the condition.
Transportation did look at this and they made a couple suggestions, but it's going through site plan. They wanna tweak that so it's up here, so that's not, it's kind of awkward for these spaces to have it down here. And then they just wanted a turning radius to make sure that uh, you know, a large truck could get around that way.
And there will be more landscaping on the Tywater Drive portion. The applicant knows it wasn't in this conceptual plan, they will be adding uh landscaping that portion.
I have a question about the curbing, um similar to the last applicant on um the right turn only. Is there a a way that the curbing closest to the street on the, it'd be on the top of that exit to make it so you have to turn right?
Yes, so that that can um will more than likely to assure that that gets covered, we'll probably condition it as it was as a safety requirement. But as this is going through site plan review, there'll be an engineering design that they'll have to meet.
Same person that told the McDonald's they had to do it, he's gonna be reviewing this to make sure that they did it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The original, the way it is now, that exit's really close to the intersection, so we don't wanna move too far north, cause that there'd be a conflict, so.
It is now like access really close to intersection.
Andrew, you mentioned they have other locations that are already operating. And it's this kiosk concept, same concept, and do they have a tent or any sort of protective covering where the employees are taking the orders or delivery or they're just gonna stand there?
Yes. Not that I'm aware of, I think they're kinda in and out of the inside, you know, back and forth.
The picture that we saw did have a little like stand that they were in with a little bit of a cover.
Okay.
But not for the vehicle?
No.
No. Alright, average operation, uh five thirty AM to ten PM Sunday through Thursday, and then five thirty AM to eleven PM Friday through Saturday. And they did receive support from the College of Civic League. Any questions with this one?
And there were no concerns on Transportation regarding their right turn. Just a thing about the traffic on Tywater Drive.
As of now, no, it's supposed to be site plan, but this uh for what we have right here, there is this.
The right turn is much safer than the current configuration, which is two two driveway entrances that are about twenty-five feet wide that both go left and right. And so this, yeah, real close to the intersection, so this is this is a significant improvement.
It'll be configured in a way where people driving, I'm gonna say south, I don't know if it is, but south on Tywater Drive, they won't try to make a a right into it.
They'll need to turn down Stanley Street.
Uh, okay, okay.
As you're familiar, I think there's a gas station that's the entrance to the to Southern Charlemagne Center over there too.
Any other questions?
No, that's it, um let's take a quick break. We'll we'll eat while we are meeting, if that's okay with everyone else. And um well, how long do they? Two minutes, let's go with ten minutes. And, okay. Alright, thank you. Short-term rental renewal, thank you.
So the applicant is requesting a renewal of their conditional use permit. I'm I'm sorry, this is an agenda item um for nine uh ninety-five thirty Sixth Bay Street. This is a renewal uh for their conditional use permit. Did you uh continue to operate uh their short-term rental? In a four-bedroom duplex on the east side of Sixth Bay Street, south of Pretty Lake Avenue and East Ocean View Avenue. So short-term rental here does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty-three, which locates this property in the Coastal District. I'm sorry. That is the that is not, that is incorrect. Nope, nope, that is, nope, I'm sorry. Yeah, single-family traditional, I'm sorry, that was a wrong note on my part, I apologize. There we go, that's the right slide we're looking at. The so property, let's go back, the property is owned RC where buildings with no more than with four or more bedrooms are required to be granted a conditional use permit before operating as a short-term rental. Since this is a renewal, uh no home improvements uh have been requested. Um and there have been no issues reported for this site since it's been operating as a short-term rental. The applicant will be retaining the same management company as previously. Uh for the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet, approximately fifty-one percent of all parcels are single-family. And approximately twenty percent of all residential units are single-family. If this application were approved, this will be one of two short-term rentals within five hundred feet. The other is a single family that has been appro- uh administratively administratively approved. Uh and because this is a duplex, there will be a total of three units within a five hundred foot radius. And that includes.
Any questions? Excuse me, any questions for John? No, thank you.
I will be presenting Jonathan's today's one. So our next one is a renewal at eleven twenty-four Virgilina Avenue. Requesting a renewed CUP to operate a vacation rental in two bedrooms, single-family homes, uh north side of Virgilina Avenue, west of Warwick Avenue in Bayview. So short-term rental is not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty-three, designated as single-family traditional. It's zone SF ten, in SF ten, all vacation rentals are required of CUP. So here's the site for the proposed short-term rental. Uh this home was built nineteen sixty-two, it's been owned by the current owner since June of twenty twenty-three. You probably recognize this property, uh the previous owner was granted a CUP to operate an SCR in February of twenty twenty-three. Uh no complaints or violations of an issue to the property. Um this applicant will be adding some foundation screening. Uh the applicant has indicated property will be self-managed and has identified a person that will fulfill the twenty-minute response requirement. Uh since the property has issue, says has operated without issue uh for the duration of the permit, uh we will likely recommend a five-year CUP. So for the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet, approximately sixty-five point seven percent of residential parcels and thirty-four percent of residential units are single-family. All-inclusive, if the application is approved, approximately three point two percent of residential parcels and one point five percent of residential units in five hundred feet would be short-term rentals. Questions?
So you looking for someone who's who's going to tell them the the part?
No, he has somebody, yeah.
He has one.
So this says renewal, but is that not the case?
It is a renewal, yes.
Okay, and the like the foundation screening would would we have not picked that up in the previous?
So we're not um honestly, we're not quite sure why we didn't happen to the foundation screening the first time.
Honestly, we're not quite sure why we didn't happen to the foundation screening the first time. Um but uh we're gonna ask that he does it this time. Um so.
Okay. This applicant is my little tour tourer, they're applying for a conditional use permit renewal at nine six six zero Rawson Street. Um the site is located on the east side of Rawson Street adjacent to I sixty-four. Um the existing condition um is residential and uh the proposal is to allow the continued operation of a short-term rental in a five-bedroom, single-family home. The proposed use does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty-three, which designates the site as residential mix. The site is zone RC um and and coastal resilience overlay and flood flood plain coastal hazard overlay. Um a conditional use permit is required to operate a STR in RC district if the structure contains four or more bedrooms. Uh this is the proposed, uh this is the property, the applicant has owned this property since October of twenty twenty-two. Uh the property was previously authorized operated STR that was issued in April of twenty twenty-three. And um that conditional use permit is set to expire um this month. Um the site meets all requirements for a five-bedroom STR and will be self-managed uh with a twenty-minute response response time uh per the applicant. Um enforcement, there are no calls for service to the police within the past year, there's no open zoning or building code violations. Uh no current unauthorized STR activities for the site. Um since applicant has operated under a CUP for two years without any major issues, staff is supporting offering a five-year conditional use permit. Neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet, approximately forty-nine percent of the properties are single-family homes and ninety-one percent are residential units. If approved, two percent uh of single-family homes and point six eight percent of residential units would be short-term rentals.
Any questions for this site?
Alright, this is a conditional use permit renewal at nine forty-one Hillside Avenue. This is the southwest corner of Hillside Avenue and Chesapeake Street. Uh existing conditions are residential and propose to allow the continued operation of a single-family home as a short-term rental unit. Uh proposed use is consistent with Plan Norfolk twenty-three, designates as residential mix. Zoning is RC and the RC district's CUP is required to operate a vacation rental with more than three bedrooms. Here's a picture of the property, uh the CUP did expire in March of twenty twenty-five. Uh the applicant will be self-managing the property themselves, will be a dedicated emergency contact individual. There was one violation in the spring of the March of this year for uh missing the exterior contact sign, uh enlisting more guests than allowed per the ordinance.
Did you repeat that last bit?
Yes, there's one violation, there's two things, one violation though, it was uh missing the exterior contact sign and listing more guests than allowed per the ordinance. On their uh posting platform. For the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet, fifty-nine percent of residential parcels are single-family and forty-five percent of residential units are single-family. If approved, four percent of residential parcels and two percent of residential units within five hundred feet would be short-term rentals. Uh the Bayview Civic League does support this application and we're likely gonna recommend a two-year uh expiry or term because of the violation that occurred, so.
So did you talk to them after that?
Yes, um I didn't get an answer for the sign, I believe it blew away or got missing or something like that. And then the the he says the listing, overlisting was a technical issue on Airbnb, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrew.
I do agree with you, not to not towards that, because of the violation, there needs to be some consequence.
Alright, so our next one is a new one. Uh this is for a request for a conditional use permit to operate a vacation rental in four-bedroom duplex on the north side of Virgilina Avenue, west of Warwick Avenue in Bayview. Uh proposed use does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty-three, designated the property as residential mix. Uh property is zone SF ten, in SF ten, all vacation rentals are required to have a CUP. So here's the site for the proposed short-term rental. This uh duplex was built in nineteen sixty-five, it's been owned by the current owner since December twenty twenty-three. The applicant will be adding foundation screening and will be ensuring the signs visible from the street. Uh previous owners of the property have uh both received violations for converting the garage into a third dwelling unit. So we're gonna put a condition as CUP just to make sure that everybody is fully uh on the same page that his garage is not a dwelling unit. Um the applicant has indicated the property will be self-managed, he's identified a person to fulfill the twenty-minute response requirement for him. Uh for the neighborhood analysis, within Uh, for the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet approximately fifty six percent of residential parcels and twenty two percent of residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application is approved, approximately three point four percent of residential parcels and one point five percent of residential units in five hundred feet would be short term rentals. Any questions?
How did you go at the conversion?
Uh, we saw the violations, that they had previous violations on the property, uh, but they were both under previous owners. So one owner got the violation, they fixed it and sold it, and the next one said, oh, this looks like it could be a unit and maybe a unit again. So, we, uh, we're gonna have our inspector go in it just to verify it's not currently a unit, and then, uh, everybody will be well aware that it's not supposed to be a unit.
Uh, so this application, uh, is another, uh, new, uh, uh, short term rental. Uh, it's a two bedroom, single family home on the north side of Virgilina Avenue between Warwick and Beachview Street in the Bayview neighborhood. The proposed use does not conflict, uh, sorry, does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates it as a single family traditional. Proposed, uh, the property is zone SF ten and where all short term rentals are required to have a condition use permit to operate. Home was built in nineteen fifty two and has been owned by the owner since, uh, last year. There are no reported issues associated with this site, the only improvement requested is a planting strip along the house's foundation. The applicant has indicated that, uh, Big Blue Gateway Property Management will manage the short term rental. For the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet approximately seventy six percent of all parcels are single family. Approximately twenty percent of, uh, sorry, twenty nine percent of all residential units are single family. If this application is approved, it will be the only short term rental with the, in five hundred feet. The other, um, the other, uh, uh, blurb on our, uh, five hundred foot buffer zone is, uh, the orange square show is a homestay. And that concludes my presentation.
Alright, our next new one is for a condition use permit to operate a vacation rental in a five bedroom duplex on the north side of East Ocean View Avenue between Sturgis Street and Willow Terrace in Cottage Line. Uh, it does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates the site as residential mixed. Property is zone RC, in all, RC, all vacation rentals with more than three bedrooms in the structure need a CUP to operate. So here is the site for the proposed short term rental, uh, this building was built in nineteen sixty four, it's been owned by the current owner since December twenty twenty four. Uh, the applicant's indicated the property will be self managed and he has identified a person to fulfill the twenty minute response requirement. Uh, the applicant intends to continue to live in one of the units. Uh, the applicant will be adding foundation screening and a tree, he will be adding a solid fence to screen his trash cans. Uh, and we're still waiting on details, but he's also gonna be adding some kind of landscaping, uh, between the concrete and the grass there just to prevent guests from parking on the lawn. For the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet approximately forty two percent of residential parcels and thirteen percent of residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application were approved, approximately nine and a half percent of residential parcels and three point three percent of residential units in five hundred feet would be short term rentals. Questions?
He said that the applicant is going to live on site?
Yeah.
He will have the, you know, also identify someone to meet the twenty minutes?
So for the most part, they're going to be the twenty minute response requirement because they, they do in fact live in one of the units. Um, it would be on them to make sure that that is still covered if they were to go out of town or anything like that.
And I guess I wanna be, be clear, so this short term rental, they could eventually rent out both as a short term.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you mean with this CUP?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it authorizes all the units on the property, so. They currently live in one, which is how they're satisfying their, their twenty minute response, but were they to move or go out of town, they would have to still meet that requirement.
Any other questions?
Mm-hmm. Alright, so I think this is Jonathan's next one here, so this is also new, this is for a condition use permit to operate a vacation rental in a three bedroom, single family home on the east side of Lafayette Boulevard between Bellev-, uh, Bellevue Avenue and the Lafayette north of Bellevue Avenue in the Lafayette White Moon neighborhood. It does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates the site as single family traditional. Property is zone SFT, uh, in SFT, all vacation rentals need a CUP to operate. So here's the site of the proposed short term rental, uh, on the left you see is the front of the house and the right is the back of the house. Uh, the home was built in two thousand one, it's been owned by the current owner since October twenty sixteen. Uh, parking is accessed via a public alley in the rear, uh, no improvements have been requested. Uh, the applicant has indicated the property will be managed by a sojourn LLC. The neighborhood analysis in five hundred feet approximately sixty one point five percent of residential parcels and forty six percent of residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application were approved, approximately one point two percent of residential parcels and zero point eight percent of residential units in five hundred feet would be short term rentals. Any questions?
Any, uh, I guess, any concerns from the community specifically or anything like that?
We have not heard anything from the civic league either way, um, or any neighbors, any, nobody's commented to us.
Not a typical tourist area.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Everyone got in on the short term rentals this month.
Just enjoy around.
Yeah, good.
Ty Stage, uh, condition use permit ninety sixteen eighteen twentieth Bay Street, it's on the east side of twentieth Bay Street between Pleasant Avenue and East Ocean View Avenue. Uh, it's currently residential and the proposal is to allow the four, four bedroom, single family home to operate as a short term rental. Uh, the proposed use does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates this as residential mixed. Property is zone RC, it also lies in the coastal resilience overlay. Um, uh, in the RC district, you need a condition use permit to operate a short term rental with more than four bedrooms. Uh, the home was built in twenty sixteen and has been owned by the current owner since June of twenty twenty two. Uh, they comply with the requirements, so we're not requesting any improvements at this time, um, and sojourn will be managing this property. Uh, within five hundred feet approximately seventy four percent of all residential parcels are single family and approximately fifty three percent of all residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application were approved, approximately six percent of residential parcels and four percent of residential units within five hundred feet would be short term rentals.
Any questions for Ralph?
Me again. Alright, uh, this one is for a condition use permit to operate a vacation rental in a four bedroom duplex uh, on the north side of East Ocean View Avenue between El Nora Street and Chesapeake Boulevard in the Cottage Line neighborhood. Uh, does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates the site as multifamily. The property is zone RC, in RC, all vacation rentals with more than three bedrooms are required to have a CUP. So here is a picture of the site for the proposed short term rental, uh, this home was built in eighteen ninety two and it's been owned by the current owner since December of twenty twenty three. Uh, the applicant has indicated the property will be self managed and has identified an experienced person to, uh, to fulfill the twenty minute response requirement. Um, the only improvement we're looking for here is to remove that fence that you currently see there in the front and replace that with screening shrubs. Uh, for the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet approximately thirty six percent of residential parcels and seven percent of residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application were approved, approximately three and a half percent of residential parcels and one percent of residential units within five hundred feet would be short term rentals. Um, I did have one phone call from the neighbor to the left of this property, uh, that opposes it. Um, I provided her with my email, but she has not yet, uh, sent me an official opposition, but, uh, she did call and express her opposition. Um, she just was not fond of a short term rental being next to her, uh, with the, the common concerns that it would become a party house.
Thank you, Ralph.
Mm-hmm. Alright, last one. Uh, so this is for a condition use permit to operate a vacation rental in a four bedroom duplex on the west side of Eighteenth Bay Street south of Pleasant Avenue in the East Ocean View neighborhood. Does not conflict with Plan Norfolk twenty thirty, uh, designated as residential mixed. Is zone RC, in RC, all, uh, vacation rentals with more than three bedrooms, uh, in the structure need to have a CUP to operate. So here's the site for the proposed short term rental, uh, this home was built in nineteen seventy seven, it's been owned by the current owner since August twenty twenty four. Uh, the applicant has indicated the property will be self managed and has identified, uh, a real estate agent named Rosemary Colley as her manager. Uh, the applicant will also be planting two trees. For the neighborhood analysis, within five hundred feet approximately thirty three percent of all residential parcels and twenty two percent of residential units are single family. All inclusive, if this application were approved, approximately five and a half percent of residential parcels and four point two percent of residential units in five hundred feet would be short term rentals. Questions?
I need to do this, where are they going to find those trees?
So it, uh, it's not as tight of a site as it looks, she's got some grass, you can kinda see beyond the driveway or the concrete area to the left and then there's some more yard kinda behind the fence. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chris.
Alright, that is it.
Thank you, that was a marathon, I appreciate. We can just, um, after. You wanna do a dance? You wanna talk about consent agenda, give me, give us the second question.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Where are you talking about consent agenda? Um, yeah. I was thinking ten through fifteen, um, seven through, what did y'all think about seven through? Sixteen.
Okay. I agree. Seven through.
Totally different, yeah.
So seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
Seventeen through nineteen?
Twenty is also running now, except for the.
Yeah, they had a violation. I'd like to.
All except the one with the.
Okay.
Any concerns with our tattoo parlor? Just, I'll celebrate.
Uh, I think so, well. I'd like to talk. No, that was the change in the ors. Yeah, this is, uh, the one in Chelsea.
This is actually a tattoo thing which. I'm going to hear.
The, the one in, um, your ors.
Number two? Love bugs.
Love bugs, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, number two.
Alright, so, um, just to recap, on the consent agenda, until something changes is number two. Numbers ten through fifteen and numbers seventeen through nineteen.
So not seven through?
Not seven through, just because there's a demolition, uh, of a, of a site.
Alright, now it's here, update for the.
Hi, good afternoon, planning commissioners, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, we'll do a, ah, quick, excuse me, technology check, uh, Kristen, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can, it's a bit, it's a bit low on our side, but, uh, our volume, so we might wanna, we'll test that real quick.
Hello, can you hear me? Is that better?
Kristen, you may, you may need to speak up a little, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try.
We're trying to turn it up on our side as well.
Yeah.
Okay, this is as loud as I can talk, is that good?
Yeah. Yeah, you're, I think you're good, I think it's on R and now, Kristen, anyway.
Okay.
Yep. Alright, well, thank you, uh, thanks Kristen, we're gonna get, uh, try to get the sound going here in a second, but we'll get started. Um, first of all, thank you all, uh, planning commission for, uh, your comments so far on everything and, um, you'll probably remember the last time we, uh, took a, a sort of a deeper look at these was last fall and, um, Kristen's gonna go into the, some of the progress since last fall, um, and also the plan framework and then before we get into the goals discussion and some of the actions, but, um, just, just to kinda, um, do a quick intro of that, we're, uh, though this is the, sort of the next full version of the actions and goals that you've seen, um, it's even, it's more up to date than the one you received in February or maybe early March or, uh, when we were having the working group meetings. Um, so what you have, you know, printed copy in front of you, um, as well as in your Dropbox, and also note the Dropbox also has, um, the existing, the full existing conditions report assessment, as well as the phase one and phase two engagement summaries too, just wanted to have all the, the full reports um, so that everyone can reference that too for context. Um, but, so for, for today though, we're gonna, uh, go through the, we wanna show you the latest and greatest in terms of the goals, so we have a, kinda more of a discussion around the goals but we wanted to pull out some select actions for you to go over as well and, yeah, try my best to pull out the ones that are the most relevant to zoning or maybe something that you guys, uh, would, would be more directly, uh, related to or are involved in. Um, but of course, as you know, you've got the full packet, so if, if there is something like as we're going through the different pillars and the goals, if you do see something or maybe something you saw before this meeting, um, that you'd like to mention, you, that's always welcome, so you're more than welcome to bring up anything else that's not on the slide. But just to kinda try to guide the conversation, we wanted to pick, pick a few key things that we wanted to get some feedback on and discuss a little bit. Um, with that, uh, Kristen, did you want to, um, get started with the, the slides here and, um, I believe, are we sharing, are, are we controlling the slides? Oh, you got it, Kristen, okay.
I'm, I'm controlling them, yeah, I got them, can you hear me now? Is the audio a little bit better?
It, it's better, yes.
Okay, great, I'll still try to speak up, um, hello, everyone, I can't see all of your faces today, but, um, it's really good to get to talk with you again. Um, I'm Kristen, you all have heard me talk many times before, um, as usual, I'm here to represent the full team, we have a, quite a large consultant team working on all of these and we'll get into a little bit of how we got to, um, what you'll see in front of you today. Um, so really honored to be here and to get to speak with you all again. Um, let me see if I can, okay, so, um, Chris went over a little bit of the agenda, so I'll start off by talking to you um, about what we've been up to since the last time that we met with you back in October. Um, we're gonna remind everyone of the plan framework, where we're at, we are, you know, kind of coming down the last hill on the roller coaster right now, um, getting the draft plan together, um, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then, yeah, the, but the majority of our time together today will be spent on the goals and, um, to some of the representative actions under the goals. And the goals and actions are really the body of the plan, um, there's kinda two big chunks in the middle of the plan that, um, you're gonna be, uh, looking at and the first is the goals and actions, which is the policies, the strategies, what we're going to be doing together. And then the future land use plan, which I believe is on your agenda for next month, is sort of the other half, it's the, where do those things happen? Um, so we'll go through today, it's the goals and actions, I believe next month is going to be more on the plan, um, side of it, the actual map. And then, uh, what we really are interested in hearing from you all today, so if you, you know, have looked through this document, there's a lot in here. Uh, we have some idea of what we think the priorities coming out of this, uh, plan should be, but we really wanna hear from you especially as you're starting to flip through it, identifying the things that you think definitely need to be high priority, be emphasized. I'm actively drafting the executive summary. I'm actively drafting the executive summary for this plan. I want to know for sure what we think are the main takeaways or the big ideas from this plan. So I want to spend a little bit of time with you all today, hearing that. And then also in terms of what we can do, you know, soon, what, um, some, some of the things that we can do as soon as the plan is adopted to try to show the public that um, that we were serious about implementing, uh, about implementing this. So that's what we're calling these quick wins. And then the last is just a little bit of next steps, um, our public engagement, our draft plan, things like that. So that's our agenda today. Uh, most of it is going to be spent in number three. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and uh, go over a little bit of the progress since fall twenty twenty four. And again, a lot of this has been done behind the scenes um, between our team and Chris's team over at the city. We've been having a lot of good iteration back and forth on some of the work here. Um, I believe some of you were able to come out to our public plan workshop in October. That was the last big touch point we had in person with the community around Norfolk. Um, this was a great event. It was the end of October on a Saturday. And this was our way to bring some of our early draft ideas to the public and test out um, whether or not we thought that they had legs in order to include them in the plan and really help, help us refine what needed to go into the plan. So this was the last big event that we had. Um, and then we took all of that feedback and we actually submitted not one, but two rounds of feedback, I think at this point into the goals and actions revision. So you saw the first pass at this back in um, September, I believe it was, that we submitted these to you. Um, and then uh, we internally took another, whole nother round at this and sent it back over to the city in February. At that point, it was still quite long. Um, we had a lot in there. It was a little bit of a, you know, kind of a menu of ideas. Um, but we were starting to give it some more structure, starting to give it some more framework. Um, at the time, we had twenty-eight goals scattered around the four pillars and that comprised about two hundred and thirty-nine of these actions. Which are, if, um, you know, we'll get into this, but the goals are what we want to do and then the actions are how we're going to do it. From there, we held a series of working groups in March. Um, I think most of you in the room probably were at at least one of these where we actually went through an exercise to pull out the actions that we felt were the, the biggest ideas or the most complex ideas. And really testing them with the people that would be the implementation partners on this. So our city department leads, um, our regional partners, you know, some other key stakeholders. And really understanding who all would need to be in the room to help with this. So that was a really important process for us to get some of that internal buy-in and consensus and understand what the priorities were from the group of people that's, that are actually going to be implementing the plan once it's adopted. From there, a lot of you on the city side pulled together one big round of edits, um, consolidating the goals, uh, starting to group some actions. So in the plan today, you'll see, um, a lot of the actions now have like bullets underneath them. We're calling those the strategies. Those are kind of where some of the ideas live. So you'll see a little bit more structure, some hierarchy in here. And then also the other thing that Chris and his team have been doing is going ahead and making sure that this plan is um, in line with all of the legal state requirements. Because there's a lot that needs to go into a comprehensive plan. So all that has been in the works. It's been kind of behind the scenes. Uh, it's not very glamorous work, but it's all been underway. So what you see in front of you today is now the third draft of the overall goals and actions. Um, and they were, those were finalized by the city staff last week. So these are, these are hot off the press. And as you see, we did consolidate the goals down. There's only four or five per pillar now, so there's eighteen total. There are still a number of these actions, but again, we believe that they have more structure and that they have a lot of more specificity in some of the, the strategies that live underneath them. Um, and so you'll see some of that today as you're flipping through it. So that's what we've been up to behind the scenes. Um, and I mentioned this, and again, this is what you're going to be uh, doing a deeper dive into next month in terms of the plan. This is kind of the other half of the plan. And um, the P, the two pieces really needs to make sure that they're all talking to each other. So as you're, you're gonna be looking at the goals and actions today. At the same time, the city and um, we on the consultant team have been moving forward on drafting the future land use plan. Um, and that is both the chapter in the, in the document, um, but it is also a map. So there has been a series of um, internal mapping workshops with the planning department. Um, you see that, you know, this on the right, this is us kind of, you know, dialing into a virtual workshop uh, where people in the room actually started drawing out what the future, um, where the future development should go in the city. And thinking through the different categories and, you know, how to make this as simple as possible, um, while also capturing the complexity of um, what we've been hearing from everyone in the city. So that's a little bit of a teaser. We're not gonna spend too much time on that today, but I just did want to mention it because probably as you read through some of these policies, you start thinking through, okay, well, how do I know what needs to go where in the city or where our priorities need to go? The map is one place to help with that. Um, so the future land use map, which you will spend some more time on next month um, really starts to get at, you know, the, kind of connecting the dots between the policies and the geography of the city. So that's been in the works as well. We are actively finalizing that as well and we are really knee deep in the drafting of this right now. Um, our plan is that we will be delivering the final draft to Chris and his team by the end of April. Um, they're gonna kind of take a look at it and then share with you all and then by your next, uh, by the, the May eighth meeting. Um, you will, I believe, have the final, the final draft in front of you. So we're really a kind of nearing the finish line on this drafting process. Um, and then from there, I know we're gonna talk more about this at the end, but that's when the, the public comment period will begin for phase three. So um, rounds of, and uh, one more round of big engagements and public comments. Um, and then uh, finalizing the draft um, into the final documents by the summer. So that's, that's the next steps on this whole project. Um, are there any questions about that before I move into the plan framework? About where we've been or where we're heading?
I think we're just good to know. Thanks.
Actually, just a.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I, I think I know the answer to this question, but did we go through the twenty thirty plan? Look at what was the vision and what was not achieved? And did any, do we have any sense for what carried forward in this? Good to know, you know, what changed, I think, from this was put together originally to now. Uh, as we think about something, if it didn't get legs and didn't get promoted before, why not? And is this something we need to focus on here? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Some things did carry over and they indicated kind of, you know, parenthetically, like this came from twenty thirty, but go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think that's perfect. Yeah, I, we, we did in the last draft and then in this most recent one, um, and Kristen mentioned, we kind of, as a staff, we kind of went through and culled through a few things. Um, that was one of the things was, you know, I looked through Plan 2030 again, just to do another quick check to make sure certain things are being carried forward. You know, some of them are state law requirements, but other things were just, were things that like, you know, maybe hadn't been accomplished that, you know, were still very relevant and really also fit in well with our goals and this plan. So tried to, yeah, do my best to kind of, um, to bring along the things, like you said, that, that also were um, not just prior, things we want to do and, and, and that was reinforced through the community engagement, but that also could fit in really well with our structure here. Um, there were a lot of things we did accomplish in twenty thirty that, um, you know, of course I, some things didn't carry forward because we accomplished them. So those were good, good wins. So but yes, we did uh, take uh, care with, with, with those sorts of actions.
Cause that would be good to know, like, was it ninety percent that got accomplished or eighty percent? And how many, the percentage that went forward and what did not? What did we drop and why?
Yep.
Would be good to know.
Yeah, we have, so on our webs, uh, web, main webpage for Plan 2030, um, we've got a dashboard. The last time we did a full review was in twenty twenty-two, kind of right before we really got into this process. Um, so that's our best kind of snapshot right now of, of, yeah, which, what's, what actions were completed, which ones weren't started, you know, underway, that sort of thing. Um. But yeah, that, uh, I, I think uh, one of the things, over half of the actions are, were s, worded sort of like, they're very ongoing in nature, which is, you know, typical for a comp plan. So a lot of it, you know, it's looking at through the lens of like, when you, when you look at the ones that have discrete, more discrete timeframes and stuff, you know, trying to just focus on those. But yeah, we do have a dashboard. Um, if you, you know, welcome to check that out or if you'd like us to kind of get, get you the some information on like which ones were, um, out of the ones that weren't accomplished, what, what the themes are, we can certainly do that as well.
Right. Uh, well, Chris, but as they were doing it, they did have crosswalk. I do hate to bore you with the crosswalk. It's a huge Excel spreadsheet of items, um, that, that they had at the very beginning. So, um, like he, as Chris said, a lot of the, some of them were some of them, I keep going back to this one. I don't know why, because I think this one just bothers me the most, but it was a, it wasn't comp plan language as much as it was accomplish something like install a thousand, fifteen hundred feet of, or, or two thousand feet of sidewalk. Was a, was action in the previous plan and then it's like, oh, you, you were fifty short. So it's automatically no, like you didn't meet your goal. And so it was, it felt very strategic plan-ish rather than comprehensive plan-ish. So, um, but I don't, I don't think the Excel spreadsheet will be helpful, cause it's a, it's a little painful. It's even painful for us as planners as we look at it going, wow, what happened here? But we'll, we'll take a look at the dashboard and see if we can um, kind of correlate and let you know which one, which items we've put, we've pulled forward. So.
Yep, absolutely. Great, yep, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Keep moving. Um, I'm glad Bobby piped up with the, the, the comment about the language, because that is something I'll talk a little bit more about when we get to the goals and actions in terms of um, of what, what we're saying in there and the language in there. Um, but before we do that, I wanted to just really remind everyone of where we're at in the process, um, where we're kind of building towards. Um, I believe you all have seen these slides before, but I just wanted to hit on them one more time. Um, and that's really about the overall plan structure. So it's with plan structure, these are also, you can think of these as the chapters in the document that we're all writing actively right now. Um, and a lot of this work has already been drafted, so plan, goals and actions were right here, right now. We are actively drafting the future land use plan chapter. Um, Chris and his team will be working on the implementation chapter. But a lot of this early stuff, you know, we have been laying a lot of groundwork across the last eighteen months on this project. Um, we, you know, the overview and process that just says how we, how we did the plan, the existing conditions assessment. We'll, we'll do a condensed version of the deliverable that we submitted last, um, last spring. So um, that will be a chapter in the plan. And then of course, our community engagement and what we've heard. Chris mentioned that we've been kind of reporting along the way about some of the high level takeaways, because that really fed into the overall plan vision, the framework, um, what we know that this plan needs to accomplish. And that's kind of the middle here. And that's the bridge between, you know, the way that we set up the plan, what we found in the existing conditions that we know that the city needs to, um, to address or the opportunities that we see, um, in the assessments. And then what we heard from people, um, we have had a lot of engagement along the way. So all of that, you know, we didn't just kind of put it in a box. It's all building towards then what you see in front of you in the plan, goals and actions. The future land use, like I said, these are kind of two halves of the same coin and together they really form the bulk of the, the comprehensive plan. So that's what we're actively doing right now, um, is building all of these chapters. And of course, the goals and actions are the meat of the sandwich, but there's a lot of other components as well. Um, and I just wanted to remind everyone of, um, you know, at the reference to the plan Norfolk twenty thirty, um, we looked at the individual plan elements um, not as individual chapters this time, but as kind of larger pillars. And these are really aspirational statements about what we want this plan to do. So you can kind of see underneath, if you think about them more in terms of departments or um, you know, plan topic, we bundled some of these together. And so this is the, the framework that we're using here, celebrating our community. Um, this is where we talk about our neighborhoods, historic preservation, urban design, public art, culture, um, some of the things that really make Norfolk what it is. Um, I'll just say, I've been kind of advocating from the start that we lead off with this one, because what I've heard from the beginning is that this is a plan that's about neighborhoods and that's about um, place. And the fact that Norfolk has such a unique sense of place and people have a connection to their individual neighborhoods um, and their places and their present, and their histories. And so, um, we really think that this is, it's maybe the hardest one to get your arms around in terms of the topics. It's a, a little bit less technical than something like infrastructure. Um, but I think when we're thinking about our vision for the future of the city, um, this is really where it's all stemming from. Um, growing equitably, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I know that you all know this. Um, we have from the start heard from people that the number one thing that they are concerned about moving forward in Norfolk is housing affordability. Housing of all sorts, but specifically housing affordability. It is top of mind for Norfolk residents right now. I know it's top of mind for you all. I know that everyone in City Hall feels the same way. The other thing that we've heard from people is economic development. That is kind of their, their number two um, concern or item of, of interest in this plan. And so we really do think these are two halves of the same coin. We're grouping them together in this pillar called growing equitably, where we think about, you know, how do we build more housing for people? It all ends at the income spectrum. How do we make sure people have good access to our jobs? So all of those kind of live together in the same pillar. The third pillar, we're calling embracing nature. So this is where a lot of our resilience goals live. But this is also where we're thinking about parks and trails, sustainability, our waterfront, such a unique um, aspect of living in Norfolk is the relationship to your water. Um, so all of that is going to live in this embracing nature pillar. This is also where we talk about biophilia. This is where we talk about habitat and um, you know, native species planting and restoration and wetlands and things like that. And then this last piece here is connecting the city, last but not least. Um, this is like I said, a, maybe a little bit easier to get our arms around, a lot about mobility, a lot about transportation. If we're thinking about building throughout the city, how do people make sure that they're all well connected and um, that they have, have what they need um, in their own backyards? Thinking about walkability and streetscapes and then our utilities and our infrastructure. So everything that kind of underpins it. As we're growing, we need to make sure that we have the, the requisite utilities um, underneath it. So you've all seen these before, but I just wanted to remind you all that this is kind of the structure of the plan. And the goals and actions will be kind of by chapter for each of these four um, pillars. And this is where each of the, the um, topics will live. So if you're really interested in something about bike lanes, you would flip to connecting the city. Alright, so um, that was kind of the background for today. And like I said, the bulk of our time together will really be spent flipping through this document that you have in front of you. There is a lot here and one thing I will say is that um, as in our conversation today, in our conversations with the city and uh, the work that we as the consultant team are doing right now. We're trying to, um, in this document, we are trying to basically do the executive summary of like, what are the big ideas in here? Um, there's a lot in here and we don't want people to get lost in it. Um, so thinking through ways to give it some structure and some hierarchy. And really, again, the, the priorities that you all have for this plan. Um, we are all ears on this and we want to make sure that that is reflected in the executive summary, in the interest to each of these chapters, like what are the big ideas? What are the, the, the moves that we think are really gonna um, transform the city by twenty fifty? So I say that because there is a lot in here and I think you, um, you haven't had a whole lot of time to review it yet. Um, but we're gonna be getting into some of the weeds today and not all of them. Okay, um, so the first one here is celebrating our community. Like I mentioned, this is where we're thinking about our urban design, our historic preservation, um, our public arts. And this is also where we're thinking through some of the facility, um, public facility questions. So your local schools, your local um, parks. Um, all of that needs a home in the document. We felt like this was really the obvious place to put it. So I'm gonna start off by going over the four main goals that we see for this pillar. And then I think Chris and I are gonna tag team a little bit when we come to some of the selected actions, because again, we didn't want to just read sixty pages worth of text to you today, so we tried to pull out some of the things that we thought were gonna be of most interest to you as a planning commission. We are open to talking about anything in each of these goals though. So, um, these are the four goals. Goal number one, celebrate and preserve neighborhood identity, character and histories. We're thinking about preservation, we're thinking about identity, storytelling, um, community character. Goal number two is support complete and healthy neighborhoods. Can you get to where you need to go from your home? Are there, are there amenities within walking distance? What do we need to do to make sure that um, the places that you, uh, that where you live in the city, that you have access to everything that you need there and you can stay healthy while you're there? Number three is support safe and vibrant places. This is where we're thinking about our public art. This is also where we're thinking about our nightlife, our entertainment districts, um, and all the ways that we can support our makers. And then goal number four, support and strengthen community facilities and services. So again, we're gonna get in, a little bit more into this, but this is where we, we're starting to think about the facilities of the, of the city, our neighborhood fabric. What we as a city can control in terms of some of the public spaces and ways to improve them and connections to them. So, um, I'll start off by kind of going over the goal. Again, I just wanted to reiterate what Bobby said, which is that as you flip through this, you might notice that some of the goals are, they read a little bit open-ended, but that's on purpose. Um, that is kind of the language of comprehensive planning where we, we have a target. This is our north star that we are charting together. But the route may have to change a little bit based on lots of unknowns. And so, um, we have been instructed to, um, you know, put together this document accordingly. But then we have a lot of specific actions that have some more concrete ideas. So, you know, the really good ideas we've heard from the public in our working groups. Um, some of the things that we're seeing as best practice around the subject or around policy, they're all in here. Um, and they are kind of, you know, here are some ways to achieve um, the goal that we have here. So there's a lot in here again, but um, this is really about where are we pointing to? How might we get there? And what are some of the action steps we need to take to get there? That's what's in the document. Okay, so enough preamble. Um, we'll get into it now. So we do have a slide for every goal. There's eighteen goals, so we'll try to move a little bit quickly. Um, again, open to your thoughts on this, but just to give you a broad, broad overview of everything that's in the plan. Um, goal number one, this is celebrate and preserve neighborhood identity, character and histories. So this is about all of Norfolk's unique stories, our histories, our culture, our character, especially the, the ones that have not been widely told. So, um, we maybe hear about the same, you know, few neighborhoods again and again. You all have over a hundred civic leaks in the city, right? So how do we make sure we're diversifying and kind of celebrating and uplifting the, the vast diversity of um, neighborhoods and cities in here? This is also where we're thinking about our preservation tools, um, and this is where we're thinking about um, visitors and tourism as well. Chris, did you want to get into some of the individual actions on this?
Um, sure, thanks, Kristen. Yeah, so this slide you'll.
Sure, thanks, Kristen. Yeah, so this slide you'll see, and it's a little bit, I know the type's a little small on there, but just to kind of give you an overview of the, some of the concepts or topics we're, we're covering in this goal again is that like the first couple, you'll, are related a lot to the historical side of it. So we heard a lot through our working groups about, in other places too, but especially the working groups where there's this, you know, like a need and, a need to start digitizing what we have. And we, there are some good efforts going on already with this, especially with Slover. But the, but there's, there's need to also geo-reference those a lot and associate them with, with locations. Excuse me. Also, you know, we want to, Kristen mentioned this as well, but basically we wanted the second one you see there, support the promotion and in some cases designation of historic neighborhoods and landmark, landmarks, especially areas that haven't, their stories have not been told quite as widely or maybe need, needed some extra support. So, you know, that, that's, that's worded very, you know, very intentionally to sort of capture a lot of different ways of accomplishing that. You know, we know in a lot of cases, a local designation may not be the right thing. Sometimes it is. So it gets, it just allows us to kind of, to look into that and use a few different tools in the toolbox, whether it's an actual district or a landmark or just the general kind of promotion of, of, of those neighborhoods and themselves and, and what's there, even if they aren't like formally designated. So just trying to, just trying to really be intentional about, about looking at those neighborhoods and those areas. And then the, the next couple are related to the, the character, more the character side of it. So the, you know, we, we are, as you guys know, we already have a lot of pattern books and different guidance documents on infill development, new development, not just residential, but even commercial mixed use. And then a lot of times based on the character district. So, you know, there may be, maybe we need more, you know, just, that's kind of what that action is getting at, is like evaluating the need to do more of that. And then that accompanying that could be zoning regulations. So of course, we've already done like a lot of great zoning interventions and tying them to the, those pattern books and plan books to give them some teeth. But, you know, do we want to continue with that? You know, it seems like it's been successful for us in a lot of ways. So so again, just so the, the pattern book side, development of the book itself, but then also the zoning regulations. And then lastly, this idea of sort of cultural corridors. So these are, you know, kind of ways, and there's a lot of different ways that cities around the country do this. Sometimes it's through zoning, like an overlay district. You know, the Neon District is a good example of, of this sort of thing. We could potentially kind of replicate if we'd like. Where you, you could have enhanced standards, maybe capturing kind of what's, what's been going on in that particular area for a while, grassroots kind of movement to, to sort of capture uses that are preferred there, that kind of promote a certain vibrance there that, again, the Neon District is always a good example. And it doesn't, and sometimes it could be a, a different way of designating it, not, maybe zoning is one way, but it could also be designated in some other way that the city could then look at other kinds of incentives to, to encourage certain kinds of businesses to be there, that sort of thing. So it's just trying to get to some other way of designating an area that's outside of just the local historic designation. So that's, that's kind of what that one's getting at. So, so as Kristen mentioned, there's a lot more in your packets there, but we want to kind of pull out a few things that felt like they were more relevant to, to the kinds, kinds of things that you guys deal with and evaluate. So we'll take a quick pause to see if anyone had any comments on this one.
The, the last bullet, I'll just say, to the cultural corridors. I think there's huge opportunity there, especially for all the entryways coming into Norfolk and having, you know, welcome to Norfolk signage. And then I think celebrating the uniqueness of the communities. I've, I've always loved that River View signage, coming up the bridge and kind of, you know, you're entering into that community. It would be nice to have something similar to that in, in other communities as well. I think that set kind of a high bar for, for what that can do for the pride and for that, that entryway. And so of course, that puts the businesses or can, you know, the, how, the homes that are in those entry corridors in a position where they need to represent as well through, through that pattern book discussion. You know, what I'm here, sitting, sitting here thinking was, yeah, some of these would be great, and we have to get in coordination with the budget on, on some of these because they're going to require some, some funding and so forth. So I'm not sure how that all correlates, how the budgets take this plan into account when we're prioritizing dollars for things. Nice ideas, but we don't have the money.
I think it's, all right, on to goal two.
Hi, so goal two is where we're calling support complete and healthy neighborhoods. Enhance and encourage walkable mixed-use districts connected to city services, amenities, transit, and nearby neighborhoods. Supporting healthy communities along the way. So the idea on this is that there are a lot of neighborhoods already in the city where you don't necessarily need to hop in your car to go access a grocery store or a pharmacy or a laundromat or, you know, a coffee shop. But there's a lot of places in the city that don't have anything in close, close by, and there's space for it, though. And so this is a bit of a, an idea about retrofitting some of our existing spaces to make sure that we have all the amenities that we need for people, that they can get there within an easy walk from their homes. So it's kind of scattering some of these amenity hubs a little bit more throughout the city. So that's the idea here. And then, of course, we're also, we do have to incorporate some of our public health goals, and I think this made, it made a lot of sense to incorporate this in here, especially when we're thinking about food access. Chris?
Yep, thank, thank you, Kristen. Yeah, so as Kristen mentioned, this was, this goal felt really, really important, not just, you know, the community engagement was very clear that, you know, to, to try to address some of these concepts a little bit more directly. And so this was our, just a fitting place to put it, we thought. So yeah, combination of things like, kind of like, again, zoning regulations, form regulations, form guidelines in some cases to, again, keep promoting ground floor storefronts, a mixture of uses, which we already, you know, again, these are all a lot of things that we do really well right now in, in, in targeted areas sometimes. But, you know, again, continuing to look at how we can do more of that. Things like tactical urbanism to test out different ideas on this, on the ground before like official kind of more capital permanent implementation of things. We did a lot of this with the Better Block. If anyone was, was around this, it's certainly been a while. But if you, if you recall, we did a few of those test, test projects in the Arts District and a couple of other places around the city. Also, yeah, again, the, the healthy, so we tried our best to really also integrate some healthy neighborhoods types, type of actions. And I really looked at the this Public Health Department's Community Health Needs Assessment, which was done a couple of years ago, just to try to, try to, you know, lean into that and, and see if there, if there's anything we can do on the land use side of things to promote. Again, it goes right along with complete neighborhoods is, is of course, the mental and physical health of, of the residents there and visitors. So it, it felt like a natural combination and, you know, trying to, trying to look at that needs assessment, see if there's anything, you know, that we can pull from that that's related to land use interventions to help. With that, there are a few other things, though, related to that in, in the, kind of the more full package. But, but just, yeah, the theme here is really just trying to connect the kind of that, that built environment of a complete neighborhood, having the amenities within certain distances and certain proximities. But, but also, yeah, also, also, you know, understanding of how that contributes to public health. And we will, I know, want to try to keep moving just so we can get through everything, but what we'll do is maybe at the end of each pillar, we can take a longer, a little bit longer pause and then come back, see if you have any comments, if that works.
Yeah, and feel free to be kind of making comments on your handouts as you go as well for us to, to address it.
If you have any, yeah, if you'd like to write on your, yeah, your packages there, yeah, you're more than welcome.
Okay, goal three in celebrating our community is support safe and vibrant places. This is where we have a lot of our, some of our placemaking goals.
Oh, can you hear us, Kristen? Sorry, yeah.
Well, this is, I guess I'm a little confused because this, to me, doesn't correlate directly with that. I mean, I'm having trouble with the handout itself.
Maybe I got a different one.
I think we all got the same handout.
So just the, each of the action, there are a lot of actions in here?
Yeah.
The team pulled out some of the higher level.
Pulling out.
That last one that you had up there was what we were talking about. Right? The incentives for building improvements, the property owners to invest their buildings, storefronts, and houses. I mean, we're dealing with that right now. I mean, like the building that we saw that I was talking about that, you know, was getting up into the, that grassy area and didn't, anyway. I think there's some things that we just, and that's what they're saying, we need to tackle this right now. Is that what I'm hearing?
These are selected actions? There, there are more detailed actions in here, so for, for every one, there's probably three more listed. And so, yes, what this is saying is that, again, it's, it's twofold. You saw earlier talking about land use regulations that may be applicable, so that could be wide stretching to cover that as well as this portion, which is the kind of market-based kind of approach, which is the incentive, incentive piece. So we're trying to make sure that we don't lose our territory.
I'm going to take money.
Well, I think Dr. Brandon raised a point. So this, under this, so, under this goal two, celebrating our community, there's fifteen goals, or fifteen actions rather, under that one. So we pulled out and put them under the heading of celebrating our community. That's the part I think it's a little bit confusing on Dr. Brandon.
Yeah. All together and under the celebrating our community bucket, these are the four goals up on the front page?
Yeah.
And then breaking it down further for each goal, these are the action items. Are you thinking that maybe?
No, no, it just, it, like, I think she was doing the same thing I was doing. There's fifteen of them, and we're trying to see
To match it up.
Where are those six?
Exactly.
Fifteen. We have to kind of circle them on our thing so we can.
Yeah.
And it really threw me when this very first page down here says grow in equity instead of celebrating our community. And I was like, I'm just really confused.
Yeah, the formatting wasn't playing. Yeah, that, that's, yeah, we, the formatting was giving us trouble on that particular one.
You see that? Anyway, I'm sorry.
And also, I mentioned that, I think we have sticky. Yeah, 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 totally, yeah, I, I totally appreciate that. The, you should have, I think, again, did a great job. She put some like little sticky notes. Hopefully, okay, good. So those are actually meant to kind of help also with, because we know they're, yeah, it's kind of like a big document, so they're trying to separate the different pillars as best, yeah. So hopefully that, yeah, I wanted to mention that too in case that helps. So, yeah, I would just say that, yeah, we'll go in order of the, of the packet, the slides, kind of in order of the packet, so hopefully those will help as well. Kind of when you know like which of the four pillars we're in, so. But, yeah, we can certainly, but we can still take a quick pause after each goal, though, if you want to. Yeah, yeah.
So we'll, we'll go to goal three. That's on page ten of the packet that you currently have.
Yeah.
So what we'll try to do is I'll, I'll try to prompt the, where the next goal starts for the commission.
Sounds good. All right, so goal three, yeah, good, thanks.
Okay, yeah, sorry about the confusion. We were just trying to find some way to get through this in an afternoon as opposed to, you know, taking a whole day of your time because there's a lot in here. Goal three under celebrating our community is support safe and vibrant places. So here's where we're thinking about our, our diverse arts community, expanding public art. You have a lot of good public art already. How do we continue to expand that, especially in places that don't have it yet? Thinking through our, you know, our safe and vibrant spaces, activities, nightlife, entertainment, things like that. So there's a lot in here about our arts and culture. And then about our nightlife and our entertainment as well.
Yeah, thanks, Kristen. Yeah, as you said, this is, um, this is kind of where this, this felt like they, this is in our efforts to sort of start combining different, the original draft goals, this, this felt like a, a really fitting place to combine things like supporting our, the, the placemaking, the physical placemaking side of things, the vibrancy initiatives and different interventions like that, whether it's zoning or more physical. But also trying to, trying to nod towards safety as well. So we know there's a lot of public safety actions. You know, we have the facilities actions that you'll see later. They're in goal four, which are of course more of the physical, the construction or relocation or reuse, re, sort of plans for facilities, that sort of thing. And then this is more just general kind of public safety, so how, how that interacts with land use. I think in the current plan, it, it talks about this a little bit, but SEPTED, you know, crime prevention through environmental design, those sorts of things. So that's where you'll find that. And then just some, you know, actions about, like this particular one was some best practices that we found that we already, again, we have, one of the benefits of this whole process that we have is that we, we did what I think a lot of communities don't do, or the order is a little bit different. They, a lot of times, a comp, a rewrite like this, so the comprehensive plan comes before a zoning overhaul. And so, and the zoning typically in a lot of cities after that is, is, is quite dated, you know, by decades in a lot of cases. So we're, we're really fortunate that we could really build on a lot of things in our current zoning ordinance, which is still new. You know, as far as planning projects go. So we, we were trying to build on, so in this case, neighborhood protection standards, that's something we have in our development standards and the zoning ordinance, looking at things like, you know, can we protect, can we apply some, some additional protections to higher density instead of just single-family and two-family? So those are some things that, you know, some best practices that, that we wanted to put in here, just they're a little more relevant to, to interventions that we can pursue as a department. So and then the nightlife and entertainment side of it, yeah, that's building off of some things like the DNC Safe Night Program. You know, we've already been, already been some good work with, with downtown and especially on that. So how can we keep, keep programs like that going? Yeah.
Upgrading lighting in different areas.
Right. Yes, we do have an action in here. I believe it's, I'm not sure which light it is, or which action is exactly, but the, yeah, we have about the streetlight, the LED streetlight conversion program, just trying to, yeah, kind of recognize that something is already going on and supporting that as that evolves. So, yep. Certainly. Yeah, we're already doing a little bit of this, like, from a, from an administrative standpoint, you know, exploring things like, you know, personnel that, that would help navigate permitting and things like that, which we already, we're actually actively in the process of, of that, of hiring or, you know, having that position, go through the process for especially for like entertainment-based businesses and that sort of thing. So trying to, you know, trying to bridge with the community and try to provide that liaison sort of concealer type of role. So so that's where you can see those sorts of actions as well. Any questions on that one?
Okay, we have one more in this pillar. And this is the one about community facilities and services. So support and strengthen community facilities and services. Evaluate, align, and plan community facilities and services to anticipate a wide range of community benefits for current and future demographics. So kind of looking through where people are moving to, if we're thinking about growth in certain parts of the city, making sure that we have facilities in accordance with that. Checking in with our Parks Department, our schools, and just thinking through the ways that all of our city facilities are kind of pulling in the same direction here. So I will say, we have gotten a lot of community comments about, about the Norfolk Public Schools. This is more on the facility side because NFK 2050 is more of a land use plan. This is about as far as we can kind of, you know, say anything about the schools, but we do think that there's a lot of alignment between the facilities of the schools, projected growth and additional services that those school facilities could provide.
And you'll, yes, this is, as Kristen said, this is, this is where all the actions about sort of evaluating the city facilities and things like that go into play. And, and they, and in plan, it plans that need to happen to sort of evaluate location, you know, what the needs are. You know, again, instead of, I think, Bobby mentioned this as well, is, you know, instead of having the actions a little bit too specific in terms of like, you know, this, this shall happen at this location, you know, in this timeframe, that kind of thing, more of a strategic plan. This, I think, really opens the door and kind of plants the seed for a lot of those planning, the studies and the planning efforts to happen, which really would, will empower our department, our city departments to kind of, as we've been working with this, this whole time, to kind of say, okay, yes, this is, you know, this kind of, in a lot of ways gives legs to certain things that they, you know, maybe they want to pursue, and they can do some further studies and plans to, to see what works best. And, yeah, things like evaluating what, and, and you won't see this called out specifically in the slides here, but, you know, things like, Um, and yeah, things like evaluating what, and and you won't see this called out specifically in the slides here, but, you know, things like, um. Uh, how can we use schools and other facilities as kind of, um, you know, these, whether it's an emergency shelter sort of thing or like a resilience hub, just places more community gathering, place multi-use kind of. Uh, purposes for the facilities, which we do, we do have a lot already that kind of serve that that function very well, so just kind of lean, looking into doing more of that. Also, I mean, this is also where we have, and most of our goals, um, we will have usually have an early action that's that ties ties sort of decisions about location of anything new or any relocations of things to the future land use plan. So that's in vision twenty one hundred, so that's where we can really really use our land use guidance documents and in the, in this case, the future land use plan, um, to help with those decisions, so. So that's where we would get into a lot of the land use connection.
Because I would probably forward an action to turn around the arts and that specifically, uh, specifically facilities, but does that play such a vital role in some of the other programs? Uh, I I think, I mean, there, you want to disagree that there should be one of those actions. Well, well, it's number ten.
Action ten, yeah.
Oh. Um, so this is kind of focus more specific on just facilities itself.
Hmm, hmm, yep.
Is there thoughts on why that was not included in the selected actions?
Uh, no specific reason, yeah, just, I think we're just trying to.
Specific reason, yeah. This is mostly for street lighting. The three, as for the three, so if you look at um action eight, nine and ten, those are all implement. Uh, and analyze the three existing plans that are already going forward. So since since it's a higher level kind of reference, we we kind of didn't select it because there was already planning efforts on it. But again, this is this is just, again, that's why we have to walk through it. These are just the key ones that the staff wanted to pull out. One that I also want to pull out is you can see number one, the direction that we were given by the council resolution.
Yeah.
Um, very clear statement. I think we were all discussing that for a little bit, and so, um, we we added that in reflecting the language from city council for that policy direction, so.
Just to clear, where it says selected actions, that's not all of the actions that were selected. These are some of the actions that were selected that we can review today.
Yeah, right, yeah.
In a quick, in a in a quick kind of step.
Yeah.
Okay, I've.
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it. I thought these were ones that we were prioritizing as actions to take action on for us.
Oh, gotcha, no.
That's not the argument.
Yeah, no, yep, no, sorry, yeah, this, these are, these are supposed to be, um, yeah, so the ones that were pulled out here are aren't, um, aren't listed as like, yeah, the most important actions in that goal.
Yeah, just these are just these are supposed to be, um. Yes. Like, yeah, the most important actions in that goal, it's more, uh, just trying to trying to pick the ones that for the time we have today with you all. That seem like the little, the most relevant to application, yes.
We pulled up that.
Yes. That's a good question, yeah. Everything you see in the draft, everything you see in the draft is what's being proposed. These are just the ones that we're, we want to invoke conversation for, yes.
Right, yeah.
It's too hard on us.
It's for now, just for, yeah, just for today.
Yes. Yep.
Again, yeah, but but to Mr. Ravens, uh, if anyone had, if you do see something though that, you know, really you you do want to discuss, feel free, absolutely.
Really, you you want to discuss, feel free, absolutely. And then.
So that's any questions on that facilities kind of services goal for the next pillar?
Any questions on that? All right, great, thank you.
This is the one.
All right, so our our next pillar is growing equitably. I do think this is probably the biggest section of the overall goals and actions, but I think that that's appropriate, given um the urgency. Uh, that we've heard from kind of everyone in the city around both housing and economic uh development and job opportunities. So, um, we have four goals in here. Um, two of them are specifically about housing and two of them are more about workforce and the economy. Um, but they're big. There's a lot in here and there's a lot of sub- apps, we're calling them kind of strategies under each of these actions for how we might get there. There's a lot of ideas that we're bringing in again from kind of emerging best practice in other cities, um, that we think have a lot of good lessons for Norfolk, so there's a lot in here, um, but we think that that's appropriate. So, uh, goal one, support a housing market that meets the needs of all residents. Goal number two is increase housing production and adapt housing options for a changing population. So it's really about um adding additional housing across the city. Goal three is growing and diversifying Norfolk's economy, so it's making sure that we're, you know, a business friendly environment and kind of are on the forefront of things that are um coming coming down the pipeline in terms of our economy. And then number four is more about our workforce, um, workforce and jobs. Um, support local workforce development and build strategic pipelines. So I'm going to, again, we're kind of going to go through, and again, this is, there's a lot in here, so please spend some time with this document in your own time. Um, the the selected actions today, yes, these are not the main priorities. These are just a couple of the things that we thought that you might be interested in today, but. We are not yet at the place where we can say this is the top priority and these other things are not as important. Um, we are kind of in the process of doing that prioritization right now. Goal number one is support a housing market that meets the needs of all residents, um, thinking through partnerships, programs and funding. Supporting a housing market that sustainably and equitably meets the housing needs of all community members in Norfolk. Make making sure that we're maintaining affordability. A lot of this is about our existing housing stock, making sure that people can stay here, making sure that people have options within the city. Um, so goal number one is really about a whole lot of different policies and programs, um, and ideas to keep people here in Norfolk and to make sure that they are able to have their um their affordability needs met here.
Great. Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, this one actually, um, this is this is obviously a very big goal, but I will say you may know, you may notice um in the in your full packet of all the actions.
Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, this one actually, um, this is this is obviously a very big goal, but I will say you may know, you may notice um in the in your full packet of all the actions. Um, this is actually pulls directly from the affordable, the Department of Affordable Housing Study and Strategy. Um, so we wanted to really be, you know, kind of piggybacking on the conversation we had in early March with with the commission.
So we wanted to be, you know, kind of piggybacking on the conversation we had in early March with with the commission.
Um, you know, going through, they had some handouts and um some uh different strategies and actions that actually fit very well into this one. And so, you know, we we want to be very direct and intentional about having a goal dedicated a little specifically to the work that they're doing and.
Really specifically to the work that they're doing and.
Um, and to try to, again, just incorporate it into this plan, which becomes that policy of in land use guidance.
And try to, again, incorporate it into this plan, which becomes that policy of in land use guidance.
So that's really, so may look familiar and that's that's really the 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 main takeaway from this goal is that it's it pulls straight from the main, the five big strategies.
So that's really, so they. That's that's really the 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 main takeaway from this goal is that it's it pulls straight from the main, the five big strategies, almost word for word from that housing plan, so.
Yes, yeah, just a really quick idea of new afford, creating new affordable rental housing and homeownership opportunities.
And that's, yeah, just to. Really, but yeah. We are creating.
Also, the preserving, like Kristen mentioned, existing affordable housing.
Kristen mentioned existing affordable housing.
And there are some strategies here that we filled in here that were related to to some other uh ideas or actions that we had in the draft, um, that fit under these different strategies.
And there are some strategies. Fit under different strategies.
Deconcentrating poverty, um, building regional capacity, so working with our neighbors to try to, um, build that capacity.
Building local capacities to build that.
And then dedicated ongoing flexible funding, so that's where the establishment housing trust fund, and that's where that actually lives, that strategy lives.
And then. Flexible funding. That strategy.
Um, and then forging partnerships, the last one's more, the last couple are more about those external partnerships, that community capacity.
And then forge partnerships, the the last one, the last couple are about those external partnerships, that community capacity.
So partnerships with those community partners to kind of try to foster that ecosystem, community land trust, that sorts of things.
Partners. Ecosystem, community land trust, that sorts of things.
Um, also community development corporations and then the community housing development organizations as well.
Um, so community development organizations and then.
So trying, a lot of, you'll see a lot of goals have kind of this external partnership action as well, so. Again, straight from, straight from that housing study. Questions on that one? We had a really good session on that, so it was good, good timing.
Then, so.
Okay, the other, yeah, the other half of this coin is really about adding more housing, so increasing housing production and adapting our current housing options for a changing population. So this is really about expanding the development of new housing units across all income bands to meet our growing demand and ensure accessibility to Norfolk residents. There's a lot about flexibility, um, adaptability, thinking about our seasonal economy and just generally thinking about, you know, the, as we're thinking about growth. Um, who are who are the folks moving here, making sure that we have housing options for all here. There's a lot of uh, a lot of actions in here as well, and I think, um, Chris pulled out a number of them to kind of hit on today.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Kristen. So I won't read, you know, each one of these word for word, but the, but what you see here, all the zoning related, pretty much all the zoning related actions, strategies from this goal.
Thanks, Kristen. And so I won't, I won't read, you know, each one of these word for word, but the.
And this is, this is a huge one too, of course. I mean, we we've already been talking about some of these things, A D U, we just passed that. Uh, of course, I mean, we we've already been talking about some of these things. Uh, it's at Council and, uh, but also just general, any zoning changes we might want to look at, like. But also just general, any zoning changes we might want to look at, really, further missing middle development. Um, gentle density is really the term we're using for for all of that. Um, off street parking requirements, I know we've been talking about those, taking a look at that. Taking a look at that. Um, even, you know, uh, lot development and lot standards, like lot sizes, you know, some of these things are are different strategies that have been undertaken in other communities around the country. Yeah, development and lot standards, like lot size, maybe some of these things are. Are different strategies that have been undertaken in other communities around the country. Um, you know, uh, looking at tying things just a lot with instead of lot size. Um, density, looking at density limits, trying to trying to reduce limits on density in certain, in certain areas or certain districts. Density, looking at density limits, trying to trying to reduce limits on density in certain, in certain areas or certain districts. Um, so, you know, the, uh, and then also if there's a way to support zoning or support additional housing opportunities in higher grounds. So, you know, the, and then also if there's a way to support zoning or support additional housing opportunities in higher grounds. We have, we have some tools already that get some of this, so a lot of this is like, the theme really, the running theme with the whole plan is. To get some of this, so a lot of this is like. How how do we build on those if we want to, if we do want to pursue, um, you know, in this case, there are a lot of zoning tools we have. We want to, if we do want to pursue. Uh, to advance some of that even further, you know, assessing that, considering that priority for us and. To make some of that for, you know, second, maybe we want to consider that priority for us and, um, so that that's, you know, naturally something that the commission is very involved in. So that's, you know, naturally something that the commission is very involved in. Um, zoning when it comes to housing, and so we, it's good timing with some of these other things we've been doing, um. It's just. So, yeah.
I know, I just want to state for the record here, there's one element of this that I feel like we're pushing a rock over a hill on to be able to bring in additional units. And that is that funding, the light tech funding that has certain parking requirements that prevent the builders from, you know, adding more units. Because they're having to add so many parking spaces to meet that requirement for residents that. You know, if we're going for a certain population of for for housing, might not even own a vehicle. They just need access to public transportation. And so I think there it's an old probably requirement that somebody just needs to take that on with wherever that government agency is. Bobby, can you put that on here, listen? To really, because we would probably have more of those projects if those requirements weren't preventing to.
Yeah, the hard part is that that number mostly comes from lenders more than more than any other regulatory agency, so. Um, the lenders themselves also take a market based approach on the viability of the project. And so I, from what we understand is that that's where that number is mostly coming from.
So it's not the government light tech funding that's putting the requirement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't understand that from that last project we just approved, the station, they said that was the light tech requirements requirement.
Correct, and as Virginia housing is a funding source, as they as they do it, they they have to have a certain requirement to to meet in order to qualify, so it's, yeah.
Yes, Virginia housing soon need to talk to us.
It's it's probably whoever backs them with the additional, with the funds to be able to to do that too, but yes, that's that's part of it. I think that's fair, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, good, all good. All right, Kristen, the next goal.
Okay, so goal three is where we start talking about um our economic development goals, growing and diversifying Norfolk's economy. Uh, support existing industries while innovating and attracting emerging sectors, markets and audiences to build diversity and resilience into Norfolk's economy. Um, so this is where we're really thinking about, you know, who's here now that we need to continue to support, um, how might they want to grow and making sure that they have that accommodated for them? But then also, you know, what are the, what are Norfolk's strengths in various industries and sectors? How do we grow that? How do we diversify that? How do we attract sort of sister industries here as well? Um, we know, you know, the Norfolk's already a leader in some spaces. How do we continue to grow that? This is really kind of about outward facing, thinking more about our business community and um who we already have here and who might want to locate here.
Thanks, thanks, Kristen.
Thanks, thanks, Kristen. Yeah, this is really, again, another, they're all, all the goals are big and very, and all very significant, but, um, yeah, this is really where that.
Yeah.
Where where the, all the actions and strategies related to, um, kind of bolstering what we have, the sectors that are working that our economic development department wants to target and maintain and retain. But also pursuing those new, you know, new businesses or new industries, and we're really, um, to, you know, for a lot of reasons, but to make our economy more resilient. Um, we we would be working very closely with our economic, our economic development department as we drafted these goals and actions as well, so they've been been very supportive and or, you know. Have been reviewing this along the way and been contributing some really good thoughts. Um, so we want to, because we always want to make sure we're in line with kind of their work program and, um, in in what they're, in their expertise, frankly, so. Um, so you'll see a lot of things and hear about, um, kind of maintaining those relationships that we have, but also, you know, are the, what are those, you know, can we expand develop economic development tools? Like thing, the opportunity zones, enterprise zones, those sorts of things. You know, again, what are what are the tools we have and how does it evaluate if there's a need or want to to expand them, especially in certain areas, um. And then a lot of it also, what we're also trying to get out with this one is, um, things like, some of them are ongoing, like we're already having conversations with development about. Our industrial zoning, you know, what 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 modifications can we potentially make to to recognize maybe some of the realities of of many light manufacturing or cleaner industrial, what have you. That, uh, that's out there, that exists, maybe that we want to attract and just trying to make sure it fits in with 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 our districts and the terms and things like that. So things we're constantly doing, um, but but this would, I think, reinforce those efforts, um. And, you know, promoting, we we mentioned this, um, today actually, about home based businesses, so that's another, another example of something that we could, you know, we feel like. Trying to, trying to recognize the changing economy, especially the post-COVID world and, um, homeowners, things like that. So just go, just trying to, this will help give us kind of that foundation, I think, um, the different interventions or amendments we might want to make that we've already been actively doing, so. Um, but yeah, other than that, um, are there any questions on that one?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next one, Kristen, goal four.
All right, so in in this way that the the last goal was more from the business side or kind of attracting business and supporting business, this one is about our workforce. So, you know, for all of our business opportunities are our own people benefiting from those, supporting local workforce development and building strategic pipelines. Um, we're thinking about Norfolk's anchor institutions, making sure that, um, our, not just our young fo- uh, folks, but also some of our, um, adults who might be want to be, you know, going into new workforce training programs, that they have options here. And that they are generally being well connected with well paying jobs within the city. So as we're building out that, um, the pipeline at the workforce, that we are making sure that our own people benefit from that. So that's what goal four is. Um, I will say both goal three and goal four had, um, really heavy, um, input from our, um, diversity, equity, inclusion office as well. They're doing really good work, um, in this space right now, especially to make sure that, um, you know, new residents or, um, you know, folks from underrepresented backgrounds are getting access to a lot of these opportunities. So, um, they've been really key for this, um, for the city and, um, we, I know are going to be, um, they're going to be really key to making sure that this this moves forward as well.
Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, this one is very, this feels like one of the more kind of self explanatory goals, honestly, it's it's very much, as Kristen said, the.
This one is very, this feels like one of the more self explanatory goals, honestly, it's it's very much, as Kristen said, the. Really just calling out the building of pipelines and strategic partnerships, um, with with, you know, uh, school, uh, you know, primary education, secondary education. Post-secondary, you know, colleges and universities, technical schools, so, you know, just trying to, trying to continue, some of this has is going on, I know developments got some really great programs already, like with welding.
So, you know, just trying to. Trying to continue.
And so how can we, you know, just keep advancing that, because that that actually was something we did, we worked hard, uh, at the October workshop.
And so. Yeah, keep advancing, because that that's actually something we did. At the October workshop, and it's, you know, we, people kind of ranked, you know, what what sort of things they, what ideas they liked best or least. People kind of ranked, you know, what what sort of things they, what ideas they liked best.
And in the economic development section, this was the, one of the higher ones actually was the, just trying to, trying to build these pipelines, more first of all, the pipelines, so.
One of the ones, actually, the. Just trying, trying to build pipelines.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure this was called out. Any questions on that? All right, thank you.
Thank you, yep.
All right, we'll move on to the next pillar.
The next pillar.
All right, um, this, our third pillar, third to four, so about halfway through here, um, is embracing nature. So I mentioned that this is resiliency, this is habitat, parks, green infrastructure, um, and sustainability. So we have five different goals under here. Um, the first is preserve and enhance natural systems. This is a lot about our, um, our biodiversity, our natural systems. Um, thinking about our habitat and things like that. Goal number two, build and maintain a network of green and blue infrastructure. I know we'll talk about this, but Norfolk, you guys are already leaders in this. Um, you're doing a lot of really good work with green infrastructure now. You just need to keep it up in order to, you know, keep ahead of the rising waters, as I know that you're all aware of. So making sure that you're being very intentional about that. Um, goal three, protect and adapt communities from flooding and other risks. So this is a big one. Um, this is really where we're bringing in a lot of our vision twenty one hundred, um, thinking around, you know, who gets protection, who, um. Where where we're going to grow on lower risk properties, thinking about protecting the higher risk areas of the city and just generally making sure that, um, flooding does not, um, become an equity issue here. So thinking about protection and adaption here. Goal four, um, integrating resilience and sustainability in capital and infrastructure planning. This is all the ways that the city can actually, you know, take take the lead on some of these projects. And then, um, goal five is a little bit more about who else outside of the city. Um, and a lot of the kind of grassroots, local efforts, private developers, individual property. Um and a lot of the kind of grassroots local efforts, private developers, individual property owners, the ways that we can kind of you know not just top down but bottom up build resilience and sustainability, the ways that we can incentivize that, the ways that we can regulate for that. Um so goal four and five kind of go together in here. And we'll go into the details on some of these, so goal number one, preserve and enhance our natural systems, this is both you know this is at the individual site level, neighborhood level and citywide scales, enhancing resilience, promoting biodiversity, we have a lot in here about you know ways that our city is already part of the biophilic cities network, what does that mean in terms of our comp plan policies and our recommendations? Um and thinking through um our you know the ways that we are kind of you know converting some of our hardscapes back into more naturalized places so that's where this one is. Chris?
Alright, thanks thanks Kristen, yeah, this the best way of thinking about the first two goals is that the first goal, this one preserve and enhance natural systems is truly all about
Thanks Kristen, yeah, this the best way of thinking about the first two goals is that the first goal, this one preserve and enhance natural systems is truly all about the naturally existing natural environment and trying in the preservation side, so a good example is our required requirements to put in Chesapeake Bay preservation air protections in. the naturally existing natural environment and trying in the preservation side, so a good example is our required requirements to put in Chesapeake Bay preservation air protections in. Um not just a state requirement but something else obviously feel uh uh really is is a essential part of development in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Um and especially in a built out city you know we have to certainly uh balance you know development with that and and we have cert- we have built in mitigation and strategies and plantings and things that we do. Especially in a built out city you know we have to certainly uh balance you know development with that and and we have cert- Um but to but this was we felt like you know this we needed to separate a goal that was really all about the natural systems, the the system as well, coastal management. But so this was we felt like you know this we needed to separate a goal that was really all about the natural systems, the the system as well, coastal management. Um and then our living shoreline, some of our some of the interventions that we've done there um to try to preserve the natural kind of integrity of those in the biodiversity of those spaces. And then you know living shoreline, some of our some of the interventions that we've done there um to try to preserve the natural kind of integrity of those in the biodiversity of those spaces. Um also the you know we mentioned biophylia, the city we've talked about in the past of the city is in the biophilic cities network, something we did in twenty nineteen. The city we've talked about in the past of the city is in the biophilic cities network, something we did in twenty nineteen. And this is a and actually one of our actions or commitments as part of signing up for that was to actually incorporate biophilic principles into the next comments of planning rights so this is what we're doing. And this is a. Um so it's really uh so I think a lot of what you see like that first example of an action or strategy that's existing biophilic conditions assessment
So it's really a so I think a lot of what you see like that first example of an action or strategy that's existing biophilic conditions assessment
really you know this is true for a lot of things, kind of like the community facilities actions where you know
It's just true for a lot of things. You know there's a lot of good work going on in in these around these topics but but I think a a lot of times we need to take that foundational step of understanding what's there But I think a a lot of times we need to take that foundational step of understanding what's there, really documenting what's there, inventorying what's there. Really documenting what's there, inventorying what's there.
Um and in this case that's sort of that's that's stuff without effort which kind of accomplishes you know what how could let's let's have a better understanding of the that urban wildlife that we have
In this case that's sort of that's that's stuff without effort which kind of accomplishes you know what how could let's let's have a better understanding of the that urban wildlife that we have
and you know different um different patterns and how to you know how how our physical city can sort of uh can accommodate them better.
You know how how physical city can sort of uh can accommodate them better and um and then also um so that that gets into bird safe treatments we talked about before a little bit uh ARB item. Um and then also so that that gets into bird safe treatments we talked about before a little bit uh the ARB item.
Um so you you know things like again this if I feel like you can say this about every pillar, we have zoning ordinance already has a lot to the tools that help with some of these concepts.
So you you know things like again this if I feel like you can say this about every pillar. Again, if I feel like you can say this about every pillar.
Um resilience question is something we'll see a lot, it's not a new goal with every goal where it's that's given us a great mechanism to to try to incentivize things we want, things we want
Resilience question is something you see on this pillar, not just any goal with every goal where it's that's given us a great mechanism to to try to incentivize things we want, things we want
value or prioritize and when it when it comes to green infrastructure and so things like can we can we expand that or have some new options for you know biophilic thing
Value. And so things like can we can we expand that or have some new options for you know biophilic thing if they incorporate bird friendly design in the window, they get points for that sort of thing so
just trying to add things to that menu of options that we already have.
Just trying to add things to that menu of options that we already have.
Um and then of course like I mentioned the resurfacing of creeks uh trying to reestablish and kind of recognize these natural systems.
Of course like I mentioned the resurfacing of creeks. Trying to reestablish and kind of recognize these natural systems.
Um goal two, oh sorry, anyone have any questions on that one?
Um. Thank you, perfect.
Um the goal two Kristen, um do you wanna give like a quick overview or I could just go straight into this one since it's kind of related.
The goal two Kristen, uh do you wanna give like a quick overview or I could just go straight into this one since it's kind of related.
You can keep going, yeah, cause like you said they're related so just keep going.
Okay, great. So the goal two is um so this is kind of really wanted to call out to have a goal that was really more about
So the goal two um so this is what we really wanted to call out to have a goal that was really more about
you know there's obviously a little bit of natural systems that you're that you're that play into this goal but it's really more about the like the man these things we're trying to do, the the infrastruc- the green infrastructure and blue infrastructure.
You know there's there's obviously a little bit of natural systems that you're that play into this goal but it's really more about the like the man these things we're trying to do, the the infrastructure and blue infrastructure.
The interventions we're trying to to build to to access nature more or to build that green infrastructure network um.
To to access nature or to build that green infrastructure network. To treat anything.
So it's more about like interventions that we're doing this was the preservation of the natural systems, so I felt like they needed two different goals really cause they're both very important.
So it's more. And the. Preservation. So it's all made to.
And much like the affordable housing study, this one we have a green infrastructure plan which does a wonderful job of laying out
And plus like the affordable housing study, this one we have a green infrastructure plan which does a wonderful job of laying out
the green and blue infrastructure needs in the city and sort of it's it's a document, it's something we've incorporated in in plan offer twenty thirty to some degree especially with
In the city and sort of it's a document, it's something incorporated in in plan offer twenty thirty to some degree especially with
the tree can and beside of it, but this was a very unnatural time or opportunity really to to really what you'll see in this goal as you go through the actions and strategies
But this is a natural time opportunity to to really you'll see the goal as you go through the actions and strategies
is pulled directly from that as well.
It's. So they had they actually had a list of land uh objectives and water objectives so it's very fit very well into this So they have actually a list of land objectives and water objectives so it's very fit very well into this
kind of need to have a specific goal around the green infrastructure.
Kind of to to have a specific goal around the green infrastructure.
This is also where you'll see um waterfront access actions and strategies so you know kind of developing again the plan for
This is also where you see um waterfront access actions and strategies so you know kind of developing again the plan for
where they are but also where the needs are kind of empower really a lot of this is empowering our departments to take that next step you know and give them that
Um.
community engagement maybe the foundation that's really necessary to pursue some of these bigger transnational actions
And the foundation for necessary to pursue some of these bigger transnational actions.
But waterfront access was something that came up a lot, let's just say um very important to people understandably um and
But waterfront access is something that can. Very important to people and understand.
so this so that's that's where those would live, different strategies and ideas for how to how to achieve that.
So this so that's where this would live, different strategies and ideas for how to how to achieve that.
Um and then uh but I mentioned resilience question again, there what thing what can we do to keep evaluating and enhancing that to to
And then. But. Resilience question again, there what thing what can we do to keep evaluating and enhancing that to to
sort of incentivize or try to try to guide uh developments to do doing those sorts of things that we want to do, you know, putting that value on on the points value on to the things.
Sort of incentivize or try to try to guide uh developments to do doing those sorts of things that we want to do. Putting that value on on the points value on to the things.
Uh any questions on that one?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so goal three, protect and adapt communities from flooding and other risks. I mentioned this at the beginning, this is really where we're bringing in a lot of our thinking from Vision twenty one hundred about where and how to build. Um you'll see a lot of that in the future land use plan as well. Um but thinking through um you know ways for adaptation, um again higher like lower risk areas, making sure that we're developing on higher ground. Um higher risk areas, places that are more vulnerable to flooding, the the yellow zones in the Vision twenty one hundred map, um making sure that those are are protected. So kind of thinking at both ends of the spectrum here, we have a couple, we have a number of different actions depending on um where you are in that kind of spectrum of risk in the city from climate impacts. Um coastal protection, heat mitigation, urban water management and other things like that. So again, this is very much about um risk and thinking through the different strategies depending on wherein the city um your property is and all the different actions that either um you know add more development in lower risk areas or protect the hi- the higher risk areas.
Yeah, thanks Kristen, yeah, this is um as I said, we've uh kind of combined you know the higher higher risk and lower risk areas and trying to trying to
This is.
High higher risk and lower risk areas and trying trying to trying to um address them kind of as one and provide additional lots And provide additional lots for different options on how to mitigate flood risk so it's always about adaptation and and options for folks to
For different options on how to mitigate flood risk so.
Make the best decision for their for their situation and their property.
to make the best decision for their for their situation and their property um and uh but sort of yeah, using Vision twenty one hundred and other resources to help
Uh but sort of yeah, using Vision twenty one hundred and other resources to help to help make them make informed decisions so. To make the make informed decisions so.
Um yeah, and again resilience question, there there are zoning tools we already have that get it just a little bit but you know is this if feel like this is still kind of a priority or or
Yeah, and yeah, resilience question. Like get this little bit but since if you feel like this is still important.
Important uh components addressed in the plan, you know, there's always further you know, there's some analyzing of that that we can do further and see if there's
There's always for there's some analyzing of that.
other incentives to build in there was a nice question.
Other incentives to build in there was a nice question.
Um we also this is also where we recognize a lot of our planning efforts by our emergency management department, um our coastal uh resilient or coastal storms management pro- project
Um so this is also where we recognize a lot of the planning efforts by our emergency management department, um our coastal uh resilient or coastal storms management project
and uh some of the just storm water management plan, flood plan management plan, so all of this very much recognize all the good work that's that's already happened in that in that space.
Some of the storm water management plan, flood plan management plan, so all of this very much recognize all the good work that's that's already happened in that in that space.
Any questions on that?
Questions on that?
Uh goal four.
Okay, so goal four and five, I think kind of I mentioned this, they they kind of are two halves of the same coin as well, so goal four is integrate resilience and sustainability into capital and infrastructure planning. So again, as we're thinking from the city side in terms of city facilities, city infrastructure um you know what can we do to add um you know and more energy efficient options, um thinking about our resilience plans. Um this is this whole goal is really about that, it is about our capital planning, it is about integrating resilience and sustainability and just making sure that um all of our departments are pulling in the same direction on this front.
Thanks Kristen, yeah, this um this yeah, goal four is um we have a lot of um
Thanks Kristen, yeah, this um this yeah, goal four is um we have a lot of um as Kristen mentioned a lot of good um As Kristen mentioned a lot of good some good planning doc or gu- guidance and um sort of policy
uh documents on um city facilities and renewable use and energy uses and things like that, so yeah, just building on that um
Things like that, so yeah, just building on that, looking at uh long term sustainability, that kind of redundancy of the of in our infrastructure
Long term sustainability, that kind of redundancy of the of in our infrastructure, you know, looking at best practices when it comes to that. Um you just yeah, I mean continuing efforts, we have a few things going on like the Better Buildings Challenge, our our city's already a part of that.
And just yeah, continuing efforts, we have a few things going on like the Better Buildings Challenge, our our city's already a part of that.
Um just looking at energy and clean energy options and and whatever city buildings are being upgraded maybe or Looking at energy efficient and clean energy options and and whatever city. Um you know of course new buildings as well so um. And I think you know encouraging a lot of it's also encouraging the use of things like solar, you know, green and blue roofs whenever it's possible.
I think. It's also encouraging some of the things like solar, you know, green and blue roofs whenever it's possible.
So just trying to trying to call that out a little bit when we when we look at the new designs. And I think um Chris now can go into the straight into the next one too if anyone has doesn't have any questions on that. And I think um Chris now can go into the straight into the next one too if anyone has doesn't have any questions on that.
Yeah.
So this yeah, as Kristen mentioned, kind of another side of the same point is that this is all about the the external partnerships, building that capacity.
So this yeah, Kristen mentioned kind of another side of the same point is that This is all about the the external partnerships, building that capacity.
You know, we already have a really strong a lot of strong programs already, um you know, we have retain your rain, we have celebrate trees, um uh
Strong a strong programs already um you know, we have retain your rain, we have celebrate trees, um uh just different uh soul smart sort of ways of Different uh soul smart sort of ways of ways that private property owners can 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 do something to sort of Ways of private property owners can 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 do something to sort of
re- renew their uh stormwater um impacts or uh energy costs and uh you know
Renew their uh stormwater impacts or uh energy costs and uh
the he- maybe with tree a few a lot of tree adoption programs and things like that too so we wanted to recognize that of course and
So we wanted to recognize that of course and you know the communication of those different things as well.
You know, the communication of those different things as well. Um but yeah, it's really all about what like what can be done in partnership with the city or maybe even more more on the grassroots side with uh community building
But yeah, it's really all about what like what can be done in partnership with the city or maybe even more more on the grassroots side with uh community building
efforts, uh resilience districts is something you know if you're familiar with Northern College Eco District, um it's sort of an example of a a community led um
Resilient districts is something you know if you're familiar with Northern College Eco District. That's sort of a a community led.
Kind of de- branding but also designation of certain kind of the businesses, they like to see their different infrastructure, they like like to see their
Kind of branding is a designation of certain businesses, they like to see their different infrastructure, they like like to see their
kind of capitalizing on the resilience lab.
Kind of capitalizing on the resilience lab.
Um so things like that like you know their green zone is another term for some of these things that that's you know
So things like that like you know there are green zones and some other term for some of these things that that's you know
uh if if you for zoning purposes kind of like an overlay district that you can you know create and apply
For zoning purposes kind of like an overlay district that you can you know create and apply
that might have some additional green infrastructure requirements or businesses requirements or maybe your enhanced resilience question, so
That might have some additional green infrastructure requirements or maybe your enhanced resilience question, so
there's a lot of ways you can do it and this is just kind of again trying to trying to recognize that you know this is a tool we can use to try to enhance this enhance this goal.
There's a lot of ways you can do it and just kind of like trying to trying to recognize that you know this is a tool we can use to try to enhance this enhance this goal.
Just a comment, do you do you guys feel like and I didn't really see any advance um access to the plan for Maury High School, the new development? Did we take all of this in into account for that development? It seemed like that'd be an easy example for us to really kind of put all the resilience to uh you know, to 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 city.
I would agree, I I was hoping to see solar panels and things like that, um cisterns kind of
Cisterns, green blue roofs, yeah.
Green.
Yeah, I was thinking about um Kelham in Virginia Beach and how they really went overboard but I don't I and correct me if I'm wrong, I guess I was looking at it more for like ARB and not necessarily you know this kind of thing but is that what we should be discussing at ARB is things like that, like resilience features?
I think it can be discussed as a part of a design element um.
Mm-hmm. Right, no, it wasn't just an ARB review, that was a city project on city properties so your role on those items um is to um review it in the context of all of the vision for the city and what of what it should be like and all the other uh typical um issues that the planning commission specializes in to make a recommendation um to the city management as they pursue executing those final contracts and the um the uh um the negotiations with what it is that they actually want to um fund.
But why wouldn't we push this now? I don't think there's a reason to do it.
I'm I'm not suggesting not suggesting you should to.
I think okay, okay, okay.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I'm just big that we should.
I'm a point. I just I didn't I was I was thinking that at this stage, that presentation that we got about Maury
Yeah, I agree.
this morning, I thought about um uh you know imperv- uh pervious pavers and and solar panels and cisterns but I was thinking more like does this match the neighborhood, so um that is something that I think we should consider. I guess.
Mm-hmm.
It's not too late.
Okay.
No, you were just brief to to yeah, as as Adam said, it's cause it's a city project on city property, it's a recommendation to the city manager on kind of you should take a look at these additional issues or or other things um which is possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I kind of feel like that one, we remember the history, they've been talking about this for three years and and we I feel like we're kind of coming into it on the tail end, just before they finalized their budget, we probably could have gotten comments in last year perhaps and some of the reviews and my you know my own fault for not showing up for some of the design sessions but um is it too late to to do that?
I'd say push it. That's the process, it needs to be designed to present it to you.
Yeah.
Um as a body, so you could have showed up and you could not have given input as the planning commission, that that has to happen today.
When we get to that, okay, all right.
Thank you, great thought.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, thank you, cool.
Thank you. For that.
Alright, we that was goal five and I guess we move on to the next the last pillar, Kristen.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to the next pillar, Kristen.
Sure, um so we've got one more pillar connecting the city, um again, this is our mobility, transportation, utilities and um infrastructure. And we have five goals under here, um goal number one, build, expand and enhance multimodal transportation throughout the city. Um so I think somebody mentioned earlier thinking about you know maybe we don't all have cars. We do need to make sure that we have other ways to get around the city though, so that's really what goal goal one is, is making sure that we have those different modes. Goal number two, improve safety and reliability along corridors, you know, we know that we're not you know we are still a city that has a lot of freight traffic, we have trains, we have things like that but we wanna make sure that people are safe as they interact with that, so that's really where um where we're talking about that in goal number two. Goal number three, improve intra-city travel and connections, that's kind of within the city. Um how are we actually getting around, making sure that people um can get around seamlessly, that they don't have to wait too long to transfer from one thing to another. Um and then again, you know, we're thinking about traffic congestion in here too. Goal number four, enhance and protect transportation and utility infrastructure, we're talking a lot about resilience in here as well. Um and thinking through ways to kind of future proof all of our big investments that we're making in these systems. And goal number five is really about outside of our city, how do we make sure um that our transportation within the city, that we're connected to the rest of Hampton Roads um that you know we can get around the region really safe, so um that's what goal number five is about. And we'll get into each of these um the same way we've done the other ones, so goal number one, build, expand and enhance multimodal transportation throughout the city. Um this is this is kind of multiple things, this is not just the technical stuff about how we're going to actually make sure that we expand transit options, bikeability, um you know things like you know curb space management for um parking, things like that, but then also thinking about the culture shift so um we know that it's this is not just a question of the technical side, that this is also a way to you know try to encourage people to think about leaving their car behind, um so we have to do both of these things in the same thing um in the same at the same time and that's really what goal number one is about. It's really about our multimodal transportation systems but then also our multimodal transportation culture.
Yeah, thanks Kristen, yeah, this is this goal is is of course another larger one because it's it really integrates the
Thanks Kristen, yeah, this is um this goal is is of course another larger one because it's it really integrates the the built network, the built uh infrastructure, multi multimodal infrastructure throughout the city, expansion of existing, we have we have very good infrastructure in in a lot of um
The built network, the built uh infrastructure, multimodal infrastructure throughout the city, expansion of existing, you know, we have very good infrastructure in in a lot of um
a lot of cases around the city, so how do we expand that infrastructure, enhance it in some cases.
So how do we expand that infrastructure and enhance it in some cases.
But also as Kristen mentioned, this is where the this is kind of where that culture shift uh a- actions or strategies would exist to, so that communication of things like safe cycling or
But also as Kristen mentioned, this is where this is kind of where that culture shift uh a- actions or strategies would exist to, so that communication of things like safe cycling or
and it really more for the drivers I think.
For the drivers I think.
Um and also what multimodal transportation is, like where you can go, maybe some wayfinding signage, that sort of thing.
Like where you can go, maybe some wayfinding signage, that sort of thing.
Just trying to always um give people the information they need to make those multimodal choices, you know, get them
Just trying to. Give people the information they need to make those multimodal choices, you know, get them
be clear about where how to get to destinations, different nodes in the city.
How to get to destinations, different nodes in the city.
Um so that that's really where you know cause some of the spatial kind of actions are gonna live in here more and more often than the other ones but
So that that's where you know cause some of the spatial kind of actions are gonna live in here more and more often than the other ones but
um yeah, again, just building on a lot of the multimodal efforts that have already happened um.
Yeah, again, just building on a lot of the multimodal efforts that have already happened.
And a future and a future land use plan will be uh very much related to that that goal in particular. You know, future again, future land use plan will be uh very much related to that that goal in particular.
Any questions on that one?
All right, thank you.
Well, this that's another one, I mean, popping on Maury High School with the bike, I don't we saw the bike lanes that are still on Llewellyn.
Yeah, sure.
Didn't see a lot of bike infrastructure out at the outside of the school, for example.
Alright, thank you.
Goal two.
Okay, goal number two, improve safety and reliability along corridors. Improve safety and reliability along our corridors serving automobiles, trucks and rail. Um again, we understand that at the same time that we're trying to build out more multimodal ways to get around the city, we do still have truck traffic, we do still have rail traffic. Those are really important to our infrastructure and we are not you know acting as if they need to go away but we need to make sure that people are safe as they interact with these, there's a lot of conflicts um when you um when you let roads kind of serve all of these different functions. So there's ways to protect um pedestrians, cyclists. So there's ways to protect um pedestrians, cyclists, et cetera um from those corridors but then also thinking about reliability, thinking about safer crossings and stuff like that. So that's really what this one's about.
Right.
It's kind of acknowledging the economic importance of our corridors but also understanding that they need to e- everyone needs to play nicely with each other.
Yes, that's great, that's perfect Kristen.
Yeah.
That's I think that's actually That's I think that's actually Name the goal.
Yeah.
Yeah that's again yeah very um another very
Yeah that's Very I'm not sure
Important goal in you know this is where
This is where yeah continuing to champion those vision zero strategies that we already have but also the Department of Transportation's Continuing to champion those vision zero strategies that we already have but also the Department of Transportation's
um actively undergoing and maybe finalizing their safety action plan so it's very much uh
Um actively going undergoing and maybe finalizing their safety action plan so it's very much uh
take built on the vision zero concepts and principles and into into that plan and um also producing you know um
Built on the vision zero concepts and principles and into that plan and um also producing you know um
uh conflicts between you know the different modes pedestrians and bicyclists bicyclists and older adults especially.
Conflict between you know the different modes pedestrians and bicyclists And older adults especially.
Um so that yeah certainly want to call those out specifically and then as Chris mentioned we do we are required though as part of state law to to include freight corridors and that that uh
So that yeah certainly want to call those out specifically and as Chris mentioned we do we are required though as part of state law to to include freight corridors and that that uh Management of the freight network so um yeah so again try how to how to foster that you know before it's economy burdens but Yeah so we can track But yes but maybe state measures to try to try to advance um safety for all the all those not just vehicles so
Um but I mean there's a lot of things there's a lot of um
So that and then there's things there's a lot of
uh this is where the street light replacement program as survey even mentioned earlier um that's where this would live.
This is a street light replacement program. Um And we know we have you know obviously block railroad crossings is a big thing, a lot of a lot of a lot of issues that come up throughout engagement that
Black railroad crossings is a big thing.
We can
Yeah even if we don't have you know we don't have direct control or or your role you know solutions uh to some of these things
And if we don't have we you know we don't have direct control or or your role you know the solution uh to some of these things
you know I think we thought it was important to
You know we
to call to to say to to sort of call them out in a certain way to support efforts to work with them and try to try to come to
Call to to say to to sort of call them out in a certain way to support efforts to work with them and try to try to come to Come to these solutions because we know they're really if you have an impact on land use and um transportation throughout the city. It do Transit
Um also they you know I just threw in an action selected action about uh this sort of best practice another another best practice ideas about
So they you know they just threw in an action selected action about
you know we could even have specific zoning regulations you know knowing that the rail corridors are here, they've been here a long time, they probably will be for a long time.
You know we could even have specific zoning regulations you know knowing that the rail corridors are here, they've been here a long time, they probably will be for a long time.
Um are there additional protections that we can look at incorporating those in orderings for buffering and
Are there additional protections that we can look at incorporating those in orderings for buffering and
um for new development extra railroads things like that so um
For new development extra railroads things like that so So there are some little interventions like that that we might be able to do to help with the issues.
So there are some little interventions like that that we might be able to do to help with the issues.
I think the period would say figuring out the timing of the crossings. I'm not sure that we can fix that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
Great day.
Alright, next one.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving.
Just one, goal four.
Um goal number three is improve intercity travel and connections, this is really again like I said a ways to get around Norfolk. Um improving transportation options of all modes, connecting neighborhood nodes and improve local scale mobility options. This is where we talk about um a concept called the first and last mile so that's like can you get from your home to your destination without you know having to make three different um mode changes um where how are you getting to the bus stop, how are you getting to the light rail line? Um that's really what we're calling the first and last mile is kind of the that's often where these networks break down. Um so thinking through some options to fill that gap in like microtransit and things like that. And this is really about just making more seamless connections between residents, visitors, you know employees, um how you get to your daily destinations around the city.
Thanks thanks Kristen.
Thanks Kristen, yeah again this yeah this is all about those as Chris said it's the you know the the actions within the city really um you know they may have a separate goal about the regional connection so this is
Yeah again how this is all about those you know Kristen said the 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 connections within the city really you know they may have a separate goal about the regional connection so this is
yeah very much about that the flow of transportation within the city efficiently safely um which we
Very much about that. The flow of transportation within the city efficiently safely
Of course we got to in the previous goal but um yeah how how do the how do the how does these the infrastructure projects um kind of all relate to that multimodal transportation within the city?
Yeah how how do the how do the how does these
And so you know one of them is uh the expansion of high capacity transit within within the city um to major like the cable base military circle.
You know one of them is The expansion of high capacity transit within within the city um to major like the cable base military circle.
Um and then uh looking at things like you know we have uh project and these are state requirements as well with things like
Looking at things like you know we have uh project and these are state requirements as well with things like
uh being being compliant with uh or congruent with the statewide transportation plans, the six year program plan, the um
Being being compliant with uh or congruent with the statewide transportation plans, the six year program plan, the um The Commonwealth Transportation Board uh manages also the
Also the TPO, the HR TPOs, they're up there long range planning documents and making sure that we are
TPO, the HR TPOs, they're up there long range planning documents and making sure that we are
uh you know in support of those projects, they're called candidate projects every time we we uh you know we have certain products that need to get scored and funded eventually but
Support those projects, they're about candidate projects every time we Uh so we have certain products that need to get scored and funded eventually but so just just in action kind of support those projects that's in the forward.
Um and then uh there's we have some strong uh ADA accessibility actions and strategies in this one as well.
And there There's we have some uh ADA accessibility actions and strategies in this one as well.
Um complete street policy, those sorts of um actions and strategies with live here um Chris mentioned microtransit
Complete street policy, those sorts of Kristen mentioned microtransit um something we wanna you know potentially use as a way of the first and last mile First and last mile uh through through the first and last mile issue.
Um and then we need to be on a couple of other cities already.
And then we need to be on a couple of other cities already.
Uh the Parks and Rec Department has a citywide trails master plan that they're actively sort of I think they're in this final phase maybe or phases of that.
Parks and Rec Department has a citywide trails master plan that they're actively sort of I think they're in this final phase maybe or phases of that.
Um so supporting that implementation as well um
So supporting that implementation as well.
Linking to Elizabeth River Trail you know just trying to find new opportunities to link to that.
Linking to Elizabeth River Trail we just trying to find new opportunities to link to that.
Um and even you know even building some new trails too so it's
And you know even building some new trails too so you know
Just trying to build that complete system so.
Trying to try and build that complete system so.
So that's what that that's the way the the focus of that goal.
So that's what that that's the the focus of that goal um they
Yeah that's a big one because that's kind of you know local scale, neighborhood scale, citywide scale, I kind of all in the same um all in the same goal. And there's different strategies at each scale. Okay, uh goal four is enhance and protect transportation and utility infrastructure so again this is what we're thinking through
Yeah.
Um just generally where we're building utilities um you know making sure that we're anticipating growth. Um if we're you know adding more density in certain parts of the city, the utilities need to you know be in place for that. But then also thinking about resilience um to making sure that you know we we don't have a whole lot of redundancy in our infrastructure systems right now um you know we we have a lot of water around so um making sure that as much as we can um that we're smoothing potential future shocks in the cities, this is kind of just both generally all the ways that we need to think about our utilities, our 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 water systems um and you know others other systems like that and then also thinking about resilience um.
Thanks thank you Kristen.
Yeah, yeah so this is you know yeah you can see so like the story is building like these goals so you you know we talked about the
Chris.
This is you know this is really the story, the story is building these goals so you you know we talked about the
the actual building and the expansion of the system multimodal system at the high level. Um communicating that you know that its importance and you know connecting um connecting the infrastructure with with the people, the community
Communicating that you know that it's important and you know connecting um connecting the infrastructure with with the people, the community
um you know the the safety of the of every of transportation around the city
The messaging of the the safety of the of every of transportation around the city
that improving the actual connections within the city.
Improving the actual connections within the city um in in different multimodal ways but those kind of little bit more
But there's kind of a little bit more deliberate kind of uh interventions within the city in those connections and then here we've got the resilience of those of those systems so
Within the city in those connections and then here we've got the resilience of those of those systems so
yeah it's uh you can see how it kind of builds on each one builds on than than the previous and um in terms I think the the infrastructure we're talking about is also resilient to these future shocks and stresses.
And each one builds on each one builds on than than the previous.
And there are a lot of link and something that we've got
And there are a lot of again something that we've got
some really good work that our resilience office and emergency management office has been doing is you know things like notifying drivers with where flooded streets are and
Some resilience office and emergency management office has been doing is you know things like notifying drivers with where flooded streets are and
um through ways and um probably a lot of the resilient uh public utility efforts that have been going on and we will go on to capture those um
A lot of resilient uh public utility efforts that have been going on and we will go on to capture those um
you know looking at reinforcing or en raising critical access roads, things like that for for industries.
You know looking at reinforcing or en raising critical access roads, things like that for for industries.
Um and and really you know the looking at maybe the underpasses you know the the flood a lot
And and you know you know the looking at maybe the underpasses you know with the flood And you know are are there some targeted improvements that we can do on the the most flooded underpasses to improve travels as well.
Are there some targeted improvements that we can do on the the most flooded underpasses
To improve travels as well.
We also have a pretty brand new electric vehicle charging plan, the city just finished last year so trying to again build that resilience from the energy grid state plan so.
We also Try to like build that resilience from the energy grid state plan so. Any questions on that?
Okay, last goal to go over today is goal number five, enhance regional, national and international connections. Um I will say this is probably most of the actions in here are about the region, um this is where we're gonna be working with the TPO for a lot of these actions. Um but this is really about you know making sure again that you're you're in Norfolk but you can also move around the region as well so you know how do you get if you're in Chesapeake, how do you get to Norfolk, if you are trying to get across to the peninsula, how do you get up there? Um so thinking through ways to make those those regional connections um but then thinking beyond those as well.
Thanks Kristen, yeah this uh this one uh that's another selfish plan toward one but yeah just really uh a few of the things that we want to support the master planning efforts by entities like airport
Thanks Kristen, yeah this uh this one uh that's another selfish plan toward one but yeah just really uh a few of the things that we want to support the master planning efforts by entities like airport Yeah just really just a few things
Virginia Port Authority um you know any anytime we can one of our anchor institutions has has a you know I think all almost all are undergoing some sort of update of those plans.
Anytime one of our anchor institutions has has a you know I think all almost all are undergoing some sort of update of those plans.
Making sure we're supporting them and making part of that and um you know balancing different different uh
Making sure we're supporting them and making part of that and In the balance in different different uh different lanes and packs and things like that so Different lanes and things like that so
um yeah supporting supporting those efforts, expanding passenger rail service, intercity bus service, um high passing transit, um
Yeah supporting supporting those efforts, expanding passenger rail service, intercity bus service, um high passing transit Moving over to the region um you know really any any form of transportation, trails, transit, ferry, um bypass, you know anything that we can do to better connect
Really any any form of transportation, trails, transit, ferry
With between those adjacent cities.
Um so that's where that's really where these live and and just yeah Kristen mentioned you know uh
So that's where that's where we Yeah Kristen mentioned you know Connecting the south side to the peninsula is certainly something and even our working group um came out and people were very uh supportive on board with South side The peninsula is certainly something and even our working group um came out and people were very uh supportive on board with Looking at continuing to get sort of third crossing parameters or you know Looking at continuing to get your sort of third crossing parameters or you know
Um there's a study that HR TPO is doing now, the regional connector study that it's been ongoing for some time so
There's a study that HR TPO is doing now, the regional connector study that it's been ongoing for some time so
things like these there's still an interest in looking at you know
Things like these there's still an interest in looking at you know
new infrastructure like that to help with congestion and other things so
New infrastructure like that to help with congestion and other things so.
Yeah that's that's where that lives.
Get the stuff for Any questions on that one?
Oh. Thank you.
You can Chris, um but I actually I have a overall question if that's okay, oh I'm sorry I thought we were done, nevermind.
Yeah yeah yeah.
No, 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 we've gone with the goals and actions but uh I wanted to move into just understanding like high level, what's most important to you all as we're moving into um summarizing the plan because as you can see you have quite a quite a tome in front of you um but yeah go ahead and ask ask your question.
Well I think it was my question was more about feed getting feedback to Chris and to Kristen. Um at this stage of the process, what feedback would be most helpful?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying that from the commission commissioners themselves and also um our community partners. Um I know that um the Elizabeth River Trail folks reached out to me directly, they're wrapping up their own master planning and wanted to submit some items that they wanted, I'm not sure how helpful that would be but I imagine you know you would want to receive it.
Yeah. Yeah absolutely, yeah we definitely like to
Yeah, we definitely like to
Want to receive that.
Um I think Kristen this actually goes really well that your gauging priorities slide um
I think Kristen this actually goes really well that you're gauging priorities slide um We can build off that too once we once we talk a little bit about the feedback.
Once we Um yeah I think yeah well I would say if you have any
Yeah I think yeah we would say the Yes specific comments or as as you continue looking at the pack as well or Kristen mentioned where um
The specific comments or as you as you continue looking at the pack as well or Kristen mentioned where um uh they're gonna have a finalized or a final draft of the plan late late of this month at the end of the month
They're gonna have a finalized Final draft of the plan late late this month at the end of the month
and at that point we'll still make some tweaks before we you know take it to the public for the open houses so we will welcome it you know between now and then
At that point we'll still make some tweaks before we you know take it to the public for the open houses so we will welcome it you know between now and then
um you know please I encourage you to keep to flip through if you have any specific comments or thoughts
Please yeah Just flip through the heads, specific comments or thoughts.
Yes, please let us know.
Yes, please let us know. Yeah.
Cause we know it's as Chris mentioned it is tone is the right word.
As we know as Kristen mentioned the tone is the right word.
We're gonna format it all nice and nuts and pictures but it'll still be quite lengthy.
It doesn't really look nice. Yeah.
But I mean I think there you know to Bobby's point at the beginning, a comprehensive plan really does need to have all this stuff in it but then you know one of the things we're trying to understand is um what's gonna be most interesting to the public, what's gonna be most interesting to your partners? A lot of this is stuff that the city will just take kind of you know continue to work on behind the scenes but then there's other things that need more buy-in and kind of need more all hands on deck for it so um that's kind of the part of the process now, we're also drafting the implementation chapter which gets into the weeds a little bit on that. If you were in our working group, you helped kind of with a little bit of a a prioritization exercise but that's really what we're trying to understand from you all today is you know the first question is you know what's most important, you might not be able to answer this yet until you sit with a document yet so kind of consider this a bit of a rhetorical question for today. But just generally of the things that we are um you know writing in the plan, what are the things that you think are most important for the future of the city that we really want to make sure that we're hammering in the summary and kind of in the in the front end framing of this document so people know that it's in here um so that's kind of one big question is um what's and then what's your biggest priority, what are the things that you as a a planning commissioner you know if if nothing else comes out of N F K twenty fifty, I want this to happen. I'm very curious to hear that. And then the last question that we have for you, I'm asking a lot of rhetorical questions, the last question for you today is a question about um a quick win so something that we heard a lot um I'll say you know internally, something that we've heard a lot working with our community, we've heard a lot of people asking, okay so when is this gonna actually happen? Or you've been collecting a lot of feedback, you're gonna be putting a plan together, what are you doing with it, when are we gonna start seeing something come from it? This is a real challenge of long range planning, I mean this is a document that's you know projecting twenty five years from now. It's a really it's really hard sell to the members of the public to say at you know five years from now, ten years from now, something will happen from this. Are there things though that as you flip through this document, um I think someone said earlier like is there anything holding us back from doing one or two of these things right away? We are very interested in the idea of picking a project or two for each pillar that are some sort of physical pilot project that the city and I say we I'm I won't be involved in actually making it happen, it would be on your end but um something that you can actually install in a public space like a parklet or some signage or you know um something that you can do or a brochure that you put out or a new a new gateway campaign in a neighborhood, something that you can do within the first year after adoption to show the public that you're serious about this, this is something that we've heard we've heard a little bit of cynicism from the public about whether or not this plan will get implemented because it's big and it's long and what are things that we can do short term from it so I'm just gonna leave that as a little bit of a seed, you might have um ideas or questions about that already. I'm eager to hear it but um all three of these questions are a little bit more for you to be pondering as you're flipping through the document and thinking through you know okay we're starting to wrap up the actual drafting piece of this, what happens next and I think these are these are some of it, one of them is the messaging. The big ideas that are coming out of this plan, how do we make sure we're pulling them out and framing them in a way that feels really clear and accessible to people that aren't you know planning wonks like all of us here in the room. Um and then the other thing is what can we do soon, what can we do short term and put the N F K twenty fifty logo on it and do a little press conference and say your feedback built this thing in your neighborhood and we're just getting started. So we think that that's gonna be really important for um continuing to get buy-in as we move into the implementation of the plan.
I'll I'll just add one comment, I think a really good plan to get people excited is to share the successes that we've achieved possibly from the prior plan so kind of going back to the comment I made earlier and we were talking about I was asking about what didn't get done but I think promoting what did get done as a way of saying here's here's how these plans work and here's what we achieved in our last plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think that could be a big opening you know statement that sets the tone.
Yeah.
For now we have a lot of work to do, here's here's what we're proposing to go forward.
Yeah.
Um that's just my suggestion.
That's great, yeah we
That's great, yeah and it's Kristen and you probably think the same thing but um
Mm-hmm.
We
We actually in our that's perfect because in our existing conditions assessment we have some of those like maybe how we work but it's sort of celebrations of the successes that
That's perfect because in our existing conditions assessment we have some of those like maybe how we work but it's sort of celebrations of the successes that
and and so we yeah I think pulling those and making them more forward facing and and apparent I think in the final document
So we can we yeah I think pulling those and making them more forward facing and and apparent I think in the final document
with certain help and it kind of plays on uh we were talking about you know what's included in the in the final plan from that and
It kind of helps You know we have the history, the the diagram of the timeline in Norfolk so we have this the diagram that's like what's what happened in the last twenty five years. In Norfolk so we have the the diagram that's like what's what happened in the last twenty five years.
And so it it kind of helps again with you know like it this is the timeframe we're talking about with the comp plan
And so it it kind of helps again with you know like it this is the timeframe we're talking about with the comp plan
and so they can they can begin people that have lived here you know a bit longer than two thousand and kind of understand like oh yeah that's when this was built, this was built.
And so they can they can give people that live here you know a bit longer than two thousand Can kind of understand like oh yeah that's when this was built, this was built.
It kind of helps the perspective of what can happen in in that timeframe and I think that that's sort of that's maybe
The perspective of what can happen in in that timeframe and I think that that's sort of in that same way
It helps bring that earth people, yeah, thanks.
I think it helps bring that earth people, yeah, so thanks.
And then one thing that I saw in here that's also from I think twenty thirty is the complete streets and bikeability, all that and it's all in here too.
Yeah.
So I think you know and then you have the trails and expend you know extending all that and I know Kevin used to always talk about connecting the trail all the way across right if that's still in here so somehow i- if we could expand on that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Also in here, the new one, I saw the safe routes to school program if somehow we could you know as as part of the bike ability or or whatever to integrate that in with Maury, I liked what you were talking about with Maury and if we could push some of these things for Mal to take a look at on what would some of these things like the green roof or you know just some of these seems like it would be too much but I don't know anything about how much it costs but if if we can really push this now.
But it's a trade-off. And that makes sense and it's a trade-off, you know, the more water we retain, the less we have to manage later, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't we get the things that we're doing
More solar we have, the energy costs, yeah.
It it'll balance itself out.
So it scoots it out a year or two, is that a big deal?
Scoots the what?
The yeah I mean she said twenty twenty seven, right, so what if it's twenty
Just uh uh yeah um they're they're on a very tight schedule to ensure that they have the school completed by twenty twenty eight so to be open by twenty I believe it's open by twenty twenty eight. Just uh uh yeah um that they're they're on a very tight schedule to ensure that they have the school completed by twenty twenty eight so to be open by twenty I believe it's open by twenty twenty eight but again I think this is part of the process this is just how it ends up in front of you I think those are all recommendations that can be made on on the project.
I think they might have also built that space in right some time in between because they are waiting for our feedback so I don't I don't want us to think maybe we should hedge on our recommendations but based on this timeline.
Right or just one or two of those things yeah it don't have to be all of them.
I don't know. Um but thank you but but again I don't think the expectation is to have all of our feedback today so is there like a timeline we should
Mm-hmm.
that we should get our feedback to you?
I think Kristen I think you're um
Cause either you're um the end of April so we'll have the uh there'll be some place holders in the plan for like phase three engagement once we finish all that um but
There'll be some place holders in the plan for like phase three engagement once we finish all that um but
uh yeah as far as like the content and that sort of thing Kristen would it be um
But yeah as far as like the content and that sort of thing Kristen would be I think the thirties is on Wednesday maybe the Friday before that.
Thirty is on Wednesday maybe the Friday before that.
Before the end of the month?
Does that sound
But how would Kristen
Let's say maybe the Wednesday before then so if I could get a if I could get a week especially if it's something like you know I wanna make sure that this action is highlighted I just wanna make sure that I have the the time to to highlight that
Wednesday before yeah. Yeah.
um if it's comments on the specific language I mean yeah I would just give it give us a couple of days because we'll be we'll be kind of knee deep in formatting and getting all the final content in the document at that point so ideally it would be by the twenty third I believe so that gives you maybe two weeks of a turnaround would that be enough time?
I think so.
Okay.
So and especially you know we have these questions already before us to kind of get our
Okay.
thoughts around what we'd like to prioritize so um the twenty third twenty third seems fair.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll put it in the drop box this will be on the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah my suggestion
Sure.
Absolutely.
Since I have it I've just put it out here we can come back with something more comprehensive for me again just you asked me the question I I I think resiliency and and everything that we're doing around flood mitigation those are just urgent task for the city to address and stay on top of because it's a long-term battle it's not something short-term but uh next is the housing component for me I feel like that is going to be so important on everything else that we do around economic development if we don't have housing for people that's you know the community is going to plead basically so we those are the two top priority for me
Yeah yeah.
the other one I think is a quick win or or something we can do quicker is around celebrating the community and you know we can pick and talk about different elements of that I think those are lower hanging fruit and it also builds a sense of pride and people see it initially you know immediately once it's done that to me and then I think the connecting the city with the transportation options I know we it might be a pipe dream to think that we're gonna extend the rail to all these different places but I I feel like that's we need to get serious about this conversation I'm sure they are at you know some level but you know getting it to the airport getting it to the base I think that then we become a really a connected city that we can be proud of that so those for me there if you had to say my top four or five projects.
Thank you.
So the the dashboard that you're talking about from the twenty thirty plan and and wins um do we do we have some areas of examples of maybe where we've in changed some some policies or zoning that matches with these plans that start to build that so you can use that in communications and saying it's not just a building or a singular project it's changing the way that we're looking at things holistically from a long-term perspective.
Mm-hmm yeah absolutely yeah there there are quite a few examples I think we had this time of conversation with um the parking uh presentation that Jeremy gave and
Yeah absolutely yeah there there are quite a few examples and I think it was a timely conversation with um the parking uh presentation that Jeremy gave and that's that's one example of like a series of of zoning interventions that we've made to uh
That's that's one example of like a series of of zoning interventions that we've made to uh
kind of provide some more flexible not just housing but parking options um railroad district being one of those um and
Provide some flexible not just housing but parking options um railroad district being one of those so
you know the resilience question I think the way it's been applied and applied over time is also something that uh
You know resilience question I think the way it's been applied and applied over time is also something that uh
we always talk about as as a success and we're you know we're always refining things you know as usually we always find things that you wanna enhance or fix or something but overall it's working
We talk about as as a success and we're we're refining things you know as usually we always find things that you wanna enhance or fix or something but overall it's working
and we're in in to address a lot of these things we're talking about so um yeah we can in in I think in the
And in in to address a lot of these things we're talking about so Yeah it's just it I think in the in the existing conditions report you know we mentioned earlier that
in the existing conditions report you know we mentioned earlier that it it lists a lot of really uh really big wins from that like um when we became a certified local government uh through the creation of the A R B and
It it lists a lot of really uh really big wins from that like um Of through the creation of the A R B and um consolidating their responsibilities and Consolidating their responsibilities and
um and then the green infrastructure plan was part of that too so yeah I think I think there's a that's what's great about this is we
And then the green infrastructure plan is part of it too so yeah I think I think there's that's what's great about this is we
we have a good foundation with our a lot of especially with the zoning interventions we've done uh over the districts around the city as well
We have a good foundation with our a lot of especially with the zoning interventions we've done uh over the districts around the city as well
to promote like the pedestrian commercial orientations and uh so there's a lot of good examples we can pull from for sure yeah.
To promote like the pedestrian commercial orientations and uh So there's
I think a good example is that what we just did last week which I think is going to council around the the accessory dwellings A D U
Mm-hmm.
that hasn't gone yet right but that I think that's a step in the right direction for promoting you know variety variety of housing options.
Not yet. Yeah. Yeah and on pattern books as well you know the so
Yeah. On pattern books as well and you know the so again getting to the zoning overlays that Huntersville versus R um yeah like in the integration of pattern books so these are
Again getting to the uh of of the yeah Bruce's car yeah we've got yeah like in the integration of pattern books so these are
yeah we're fortunate we have a lot of a lot of good a lot of good work that's happening for years and
Yeah we're fortunate we have a lot A lot of A lot of work that's happening for years and we can just build on that yeah.
I guess again hearing that comment again does the commission want us to try to package that so that people can understand that or how would you like us to
Like
just yeah so maybe revisit kind of you know this is what we've done
Mm-hmm.
um okay.
And I think even in the you take this back out to the community for feedback you can talk about you know that piece about the A D Us you know I think you make a very good point Mr. Young about um it's not always what you can see it's that you know um those those interventions that policy that
Mm-hmm.
like oh wow this was the and how it how it helped I think reducing the parking you know someone might say well okay
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
well it also meant that your building could be bigger without um having all of those parking spaces increasing our housing supply
Right.
I think making it clear maybe as an example during the presentation might be helpful for the community just to tie everything together.
Mm-hmm. Yeah yeah yeah.
It's probably hard for you guys and cause you're down in the weeds and it's hard to look at the all the good stuff that you've done over the years and now it
It's hard because sometimes sometimes you don't know if we've it's hard to hear if we've done good stuff sometimes
Yeah.
the honest point is though is that we were very intentional when planning for twenty thirty was done to rewrite the zoning ordinance
Mm-hmm.
a lot of the things and ideas were captured in the zoning rewrite with intention so um prior to that it always has been kind of individualized kind of interventions um which would be harder to capture but I'm sure that many of the things that that we've done with the current ordinance can be easily captured saying look this is where we move the we move the ball down toward so.
Well we think you're doing a wonderful job and we should say it more often.
Yeah doing our best.
That's helpful feedback.
That's helpful feedback.
Great uh we just have a couple more slides and they're really just about the next steps beyond um the I mean May you guys will be talking more about the future land use plan but then the draft plan will be ready for public review and we could use your help outreach on this so um Ann and Chris just finalized these dates um we will be having four open houses as part of our phase three engagement in early June um they'll be drop-in style if you've been to any of the past open houses they will they won't be dissimilar from that in terms of having different stations around that you can weigh in on um and you know kind of showing the the final plan recommendations um and you know talking through what that means for people and then the future land use plan as well so they'll be early June there's four of these um I didn't know Chris if you wanted to talk in any more detail about this planning and then from here on out the um the document will be um on the website for public comments and then we had a really good a meeting with our engagement task force this morning um and talked through some ideas about where else we can park the actual draft plan document in the city with a comment box that people can weigh in on it even if they don't have digital access.
Yeah now thanks Kristen yeah this yeah traffic for uh public open houses that the city will fill in um we
Yeah thanks Kristen yeah this it is our four um public open houses throughout the city and we feel like um we you know uh
You know uh really covered covers the city really well with these locations and uh it's it's like Kristen said the sort of standard format of the Really help cover the city really well with these locations and uh it's it's like Kristen said the sort of standard format of the
uh open houses where uh we'll have uh drop-in dropout format five to seven P M um where you know we'll have boards and probably at each pillar some of the big takeaways and
Drop-in dropout format five to seven P M where you know we'll have boards and probably each pillar some of the big takeaways and
a cop full copy of the plan of course for people to flip through if they like and um you know have them give them an opportunity to give us feedback on like boards or something like that um
To flip through if they like and you know give them to give us feedback on it like boards or something like that um
and then following this we would have a about a you know maybe a month a month and a half or so where um and this would span through most of July would be the online portions we'd have the whole plan
About you know maybe one in one hundred percent where just and this would span through most of July would be the online portions we'd have the whole plan um you know online for people to it'd be very reader reader friendly we wouldn't just be like you know huge the whole plan in its entirety For people to be very re- reader friendly
that someone has to scroll through but um you know the different pillars people could really like see the future land use plan so they
That someone has to scroll through but um you know the different pillars people could really like see the future land use plan so they
if someone was just interested in transportation let's say they could just you know focus on that and give us comments that way um
Transportation stay
so that that'd be the online engagement at the same time we're talking about um and we're still workshopping the the exact the details of this but we what we wanna do is like a
So that that's the engagement the same time we're talking about um and we're still workshopping the the exact the details of this but we what we wanna use is like a
in a sort of an accompanying tool to the online engagement is have kind of these um
An accompaniment tool to the online engagement
have a copy of the plan um and like a Dropbox for comments and basically placed around the city in a few locations
Um and like drop box for comments and
um that are you know gonna get a lot of foot traffic so get some libraries or accompaniment and some other kinds
That are you're gonna get foot traffic so you have some libraries uh accompaniment and some other kinds like third spaces so I think uh that's our that's that's our other kind of uh newer tool that we wanna use this time again just trying to I think uh that's our that's that's our kind of uh newer tool we wanna use this time again just trying to Trying to make people that couldn't come to the public open houses as possible so
trying to reach as many people that couldn't come to the public open houses as possible so um that's the other part of it that we'll plan to do so we'll hopefully have all that wrapped up
That's the other part that we'll plan to do so we'll hopefully have all that wrapped up probably you know I'd say early August the latest probably Probably yeah I'd say early August at least probably so and we'll work on And then we'll work on uh finalizing the edits from that as we get into the As we get to
and we may we may be initiating the the amendment to adopt the plans sometime during there just to get it just to get initiated so
And we With the the amendment to adopt the plan sometime during there just to get just to get initiated so uh but yeah we'll have it on of course the adoption process But yeah of course the adoption process after all that's been lead so.
And that's it. So thank you for um for going with us through that I know that was a bit of a um a marathon and you we didn't even get into every action so I appreciate your attention today on um on all of our slides and all of our goals and actions.
Thank you this is great work and um I think these dates I sent an email earlier about um having a commissioner calendar where we could keep up with a lot of these dates um I don't know if that's something we can add these open houses to but
Mm-hmm.
um I highly encourage everyone to um reach out to your networks and let them know when these dates are coming up um I don't know if we're gonna have any I know with the postcards work really well at least for my community um but do as much as you can to get people to come out because this needs to be an inclusive
Mm-hmm.
project uh from beginning to end so that's thank you.
Thank you.
Great thank you so much really great to get to talk with you all today and hope we talk again soon.
Thank you Kristen.
Sure thank you Kristen.
All right okay thank you have a good day.
You too.
Thank you Kristen.
Oh thank you too Chris appreciate your work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um we already talked about the consent agenda um director's comments council actions.
Thank you Madam Chair the city council met on Tuesday um all of your items that were not public hearing items um on your last month's uh agenda were approved so include your short-term rentals the Spark Hotel um the two entertainment or the banquet hall uh Coalescence Coffee um those were all approved by city council I did provide the planning update to the council no concern about the um proposed tax amendment for accessory use in the P C Os to add um kennel um but there was a really lengthy I won't say lengthy but there was a good discussion regarding um the accessory dwelling units and the need for potential uh public outreach as I told the commission previously I'm working with W P A to provide kind of a one cheater to explain um accessory dwelling units we're gonna expand that a little bit and then through neighborhoods try to uh add the direction of the manager and the the approval of the mayor um share that with each of the civic leagues and we'll probably have to hit the road a little bit but um the one thing we do wanna continue and is and we hope that um as you interact with folks at may talk to you about it accessory dwelling units are already permitted in the city and so this is just um expanding it slightly it's not a new concept I think a lot of people believe that it's uh being added in um where it's not permitted but really it's just already permitted either by right or by conditional use permit and it's and a lot of people don't know that they have them around for the most part so um we haven't approved many I know that Austin showed you in his presentation probably eight times when he presented it but um uh at that being said the whole goal is to not is to assure that it fits into the neighborhood so that you don't notice it that's the whole point um and so well we have some legwork in front of us I don't I don't know um but we'll see how quickly we can get it in front of the council um but uh we'll staff will continue to work that and that's all I have.
Thank you. Alright um comments from commissioners we've done a lot of talking today so I understand if go ahead Mr. Bateman.
Um you know um Mr. Tahan we parking came up quite a few times like today uh last time we spoke uh Jeremy presented something that you guys were gonna go back and take a look at um what what is additional benefits the city might achieve of a benefit on removing park minimum parking requirements.
Um we took the approach to I I we went to do research on the ones that were case studies um first um we only have one that and I don't know if they updated it Buffalo's case study on their parking norms that uh we've had staff looking through so we've been trying to scour to see anybody that's reduced their or uh kind of the the revisit of it to see um uh any of the report outs we haven't found we haven't been successful in finding that and
I was looking for this presentation that Richmond did because it was we were all packed in that one room in Williamsburg they presented their you know their uh convenable um I was just curious if we had any contact and it's been a year.
We can Uh we can reach out to them um part of what's interesting for theirs is that they also is very targeted and they also did um a parking study that that kind of analyzed all the public parking that was available similar to kind of what we did downtown but we can reach out to our contacts in Richmond Chris I'm adding that to your list of things you um to to try to pull that information down and we can get that shared.
Very good thank you.
Anything else? So we've been talking and pushing a lot of supporting healthy neighborhoods um I'm not sure how to if we can address this or not but it's the smoking issue when you're sitting outside of a restaurant and you have staff and patrons of other restaurants that can come out in front of their place and smoke and then it goes to the places where you're sitting and eating and I know we have a requirement that you cannot allow smoking on your patio's but it it just seems interesting that you can stand there and smoke and that's legal but you can't sit there uh without being exposed to it so is there a way that we can address that with a ordinance or something?
Are you asking does the city have the power to prohibit bystanders from smoking in the vicinity of outdoor diners?
I'm really asking for is there a way that we can have um restaurant owners bar owners to not allow their patrons and their staff to go in front of their storefront and hang and smoke I mean could they provide a designated smoking area in the back for example not right there in the front cause that's what's happening downtown um along Ramby.
Um I I'll I'll dig into a little more um I I I'm already I'm al- I already see some leverage um to impose upon the management the conduct of their staff have in certain uh in in certain conditional use permits where um especially in uh shared buildings or shared alleys we have imposed rules about um the um appropriate use of those shared spaces leaving the door open to the alley when you can do that when you can't do that um where the garbage can be uh stored until it's picked up uh for collection so um there probably are some there probably is some leverage to craft a condition about the management of the operation that would talk about where any employee smoking area could be permitted um if it looks like a particular site might have some adverse impact that to get you would have facts to support um that imposing that condition would have a a a public health safety or welfare benefit
Right.
that one's um I think works I'll I'll work on it a little bit more um That one's, um, I think works, I'll I'll work on it a little bit more, um, and then I think the patron is a different question and I don't have a guess right now, so I'm gonna defer on that till we can think about it a bit.
Okay. That's one, may I bring up another one? The other one is um.
The alleys.
Downtown. Um, many of them are just overflowing with trash and we've been working on this for a couple of years, calling, you know, the. Number that we're supposed to call and reporting it, it may work for a week or two. But it's not working because it's still here, trash piling up outside in the back alleys downtown and it's not a good look, we have these ships coming in now. You have all this traffic coming through and it really isn't a good look for the city, now I'm not sure if that's an ordinance or something that, you know, we can. Um, do something about, but something needs to be done there too.
Yeah, so you're talking, these are public alleys?
Mm.
Yeah, so that's a right of way issue, um, this city does have rules about that, I know. Um. About that, that, that specific hypotheticals or specific examples, I'm not sure what to say about that, but that is clearly within the realm of the city's power to. Regulate its right of way so that the use of the public and the purposes that it's maintained as a public right of way can be, um. Uh, um, can be protected and enjoyed by the public.
And I think the key is that, uh. I think you're more concerned with the the frequency and the ability to keep the area clean and and trying to attack that, um, which is probably the the. I think the avenue that it goes, like we we already regulate it, right? It's not supposed to be there.
Why the enforcement issue, I guess my guess, but I'm not close enough to take that.
Yes, I'm for it.
Too old.
For an a city that should be as nice and clean as it is, yeah.
What is the capacity issue, are they over capac- adding too much into, maybe they need an extra bin or something? These people. That's part of it too.
Bob, did you say, um, the the whole uh transparency, is that something that you're you're working on?
Thank you, I was gonna bring that up, I forgot to bring that up in my comments, uh we had two um additional items uh that were brought up by council regarding. Uh, temporary signage or I should probably say window signage, um as well as uh transparency, um that we discussed uh on Tuesday that. Uh, me and staff and Jeremy have been discussing and reviewing currently, um, so we have some enforcement things that we need to ta- take a look at, again, just noting that. Um, as we took over zoning inspections, that wasn't, the window signage wasn't the the highest priority, it was more do people have their fences in the right spot and are people getting permits and now. Um, we're starting to get back into the realm of taking o- of of taking all those back over, so we need to work on that, um, so we are, we have a couple meetings set up to to discuss it, um. Transparency is a hard one, um, we'll prob- we probably should give a presentation just so everyone's on the same page about transparency. Um, transparency is technically only required in the PCOS and the downtown district. Um, everywhere else, the form standards require fenestration, which requires articulation in the building, which includes doors and windows, but doesn't have to be windows, so. Um, there's a nuance to that 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 bleeds over to our uh having fenestration also means you should have transparency, which is not technically what the code says. And so I think it's best that we probably put it all out there, try to figure it out and then just uh sit down, again, we're um timely as you ask it, um. Jeremy and I are sitting down zoning enforced with the team leaders and the inspectors tomorrow to assure that we're all on the same page on the temporary signage issues. Um, and then we're gonna tackle kind of each of those as well, as lo- as well as the something else that was also brought up by council, the um the vendors. So we've got a uh the the we've got a lot on our plate to try to kind of push through, uh.
Just the food trucks, uh.
The food trucks, yeah, the food truck, con- yes, yeah.
Permanent. Food trucks.
Yeah.
The food truck consideration, um.
But don't move it.
No, don't move it.
They uh, um, so we've got a we'd have to kind of try to address all those, so um we're trying to pick them off one at a time, include that in there, also the. Um, requests that we had for the auto repair, um, that's floating around still that we need to take care of, um, we're a bit we're a bit overwhelmed, so we're gonna try to pick them off as we can, so.
Right.
My particular concerns about the visibility.
Understand.
Thank you.
Yes.
One more thing, I don't care if I can, uh, Austin, if you wanna stand up and and Ellen and Christine, yep, sorry, as they then sat through this whole meeting and have no context to what we just did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
This is a meeting, yeah, this is uh Emma and Christine, they're two of our new zoning reviewers, they're taking over uh Ann's old role on church or rentals and Haley's old role in uh the day to day zoning review. So like I said, Emma and Christine, do you guys wanna introduce yourselves very quickly?
Awesome.
Oh, um, hi, I'm Christine, um, I graduated from U D U, um, with a degree in both the science, uh, my intern at the D I office last year as an executive intern, um.
She was working with Jalisha.
Yeah, she's my supervisor and yeah, now I'm here.
It's good, hi, I'm Emma, I uh graduated from UConn a couple times, uh, and then I was working as a lawyer in Connecticut, um, for the state. And uh my husband is active duty, so we're down here and obviously not barred in Virginia and I was like, kind of decided if I wanted to invest all that and I just decided for a change, so. I'm really enjoying it here, welcome.
First week, they're just getting settled in, but they're learning quick.
Thank you.
Forty.
Okay.
It's all, yeah, I think so, I think that's funny.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know. Think we're done here, um, I think unless anyone has anything else to add, comments, questions, answers, all right, well, then we're adjourned, thank you.